All right, good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all to our Monday, November 27th, regular city council meeting. Heather, may I please have a roll call?
Councilmember Lamont?
Here.
Councilmember Rosenthal?
Here.
Councilmember Wagner?
Here.
Mayor Proton Mullen?
Here.
Mayor Peake?
Here.
You have a call?
Thank you. I'd like to ask Wendy Warner to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All stand. I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda and amending it by moving 6A right after consent calendar.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Heather, may I please have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on November 16th, 2017, with the amended agenda posted November 21st, 2017.
Thank you. We're now at public comment, and if you hear your name, if you want to come sit up in the front row, we can work our way through this, although I don't think we have a lot of slips tonight, so. Thank you. All right, Wendy Dunn, followed by George Caudill.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council and staff. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak before you this evening. First, I must admit, it's been a while since I've been down to the Country Mart. Recently, I went to the Country Mart only to find out that Michael Cosse has finally had his way and cut down the coral trees that the egrets and herons have nested in for decades. The one left standing is cut down to literally sticks, and it has flashing lights in it. There are no birds in it this evening, I just went and took pictures. There are birds nesting in the other trees that have also been hacked down to sticks. I understand that your hands may be tied regarding this matter, because this is private property, and it is one of your largest revenue generators. However, Michael Cosse, what he has done is wrong. You all were voted by the people, including me, I voted for all of you at one point, to be, to represent us and be good stewardships of the environment, and for you to have not at least raised concern over this with our community is also wrong. I am in contact with the Coastal Commission, Laurel Jones, who's the Conservation Chair of the Santa Monica Autobahn, Daniella LaFer with State Parks, Dan Cooper, as well as many others. I am here this evening to put this on public record, for you all, and to be put on notice. I find that this is shameful, that those nesting sites have been removed, and what's left is hacked down to literal sticks. I was just in Santa Barbara, and the trees in Santa Barbara, they're right there in the parking lot where the harbor is, they're beautiful, they're full of birds, the trees are full, and for Michael Cosse to be able to cut those trees back the way he has, and cut those trees down, so that birds don't poop on the cars, he should be working with the Autobahn Society like he was working with them before, telling them that he was going to be putting signs out there for the tourists, because we all know, many tourists come to see those birds. They've come for years, and those birds have been there for over 50 years. So, I just find this egregious, and I'm hoping that you all will help me figure out a way to protect that last tree that's at least there, and get those godforsaken lights down that are flashing. That should not happen. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Wendy. George, Mr. Caudill?
How are you all this evening? The reason why I'm here is recently, we've had an issue with feeding the homeless at Morning View. Somebody brought to my attention that the reason why the meals were cut out, which are vital to people that are homeless, because, you know, eating cold sandwiches every day is not, you know, it's not very pleasing, but, and to have that one hot meal every single week is a treat. A lot of people from Santa Monica and Venice and stuff have been coming up here causing trouble. The people that stay right in this general area right here are not the ones that are causing all the trouble. So anyways, yeah, you got rid of those people, they're back where they need to be, everything's calm now, but somebody told me that all you had to do was find another place to have the hot meal. It's not, it's away from the high school, away from the neighborhoods, you know, so that there's, so that there's no tension in the neighborhood, okay? And they told me that you guys have a facility here, you have kitchens here, you have picnic tables in the back, there's no neighbors around here anywhere, there's no high school anywhere around here, so why can't you guys, in good faith, you know, because of the bad press and everything, step up to the plate and let them have their hot meal here? So that's my concern. You guys can think it over and vote on it, whatever you need to do. First time I ever been to a town council meeting in my life, but, you know, I felt like, you know, that one hot meal is so important, it really, really is, you don't have any idea. Just try yourselves once, to go a whole week doing nothing but eating cold food, cold sandwiches, stuff like that, and you'll see what I mean. And then eat a hot meal and see just how good a bowl of soup tastes. But anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, George. We're now at city council subcommittee reports, or city manager update, sorry.
Hi, good evening. I don't have a whole lot to report due to the short week last week, but I did want to make sure everybody has the city open house for our holiday event on their calendar, which is December 14th, from 4:00 to 6:00 here at City Hall, so we hope everybody will join us then. Thanks.
Thank you. Jay, you want to start?
Thank you, Skylar. I attended the Santa Monica Municipal Malibu School District meeting last week, and read a letter into the record from the entire council. It was received well, I stayed to the end of the meeting. It's always good to educate yourself about education, but we were represented while you guys were out of town. Thanks.
Thank you, Jay. Laura?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. I'm sorry Wendy left. I would imagine she's talking about the trees right by the Starbucks? Is that the tree she's talking about? And I hadn't, I guess I haven't been there since they were very popular with the egrets. Riva, did you want to say something?
Sure, yes, we did have a report of this to staff earlier today, and we did check with a city biologist, and those trees are actually not protected trees. If it was nesting season, then there is a problem with trimming them during nesting season, but as far as I know, because it's on private property, we're limited in what we can do, but staff is aware and is following up to make sure that nothing is violated.
I believe nesting season starts in January, because I know you can trim trees up till January, so, but I would like, see if staff can look into something, because those trees were kind of iconic, and was a place for the, especially the white egrets would be there, and people would watch them all the time. Yes, and underneath was quite a mess, but there are things that you can do.
We'll follow up.
Okay, thank you. As for the homeless thing, I think maybe Skylar will be addressing some of that in his talks. Thank you for speaking about that. Just two weeks ago, Rick, Riva, Lou, and myself were at the National League of Cities, and it was a really good meeting. I was able to go to a couple of really interesting things. One of the things that's always good to know is, when I went to some of the, kind of looking at green technologies, environmental issues about what cities are doing, we're really doing very well here. When I hear about what other cities are doing, we're so much further along the pathway to being a truly green city, that it's nice to see that. I also was able to learn from their Parks and Rec Department, it was in Charlotte, North Carolina, went on a tour and learned about how to do some public-private partnerships, especially when it came to cultural arts and parks, so I'm going to pass that along to our Community Services Department. And also went to a really good presentation, Ideas for Small Cities. I also went to the Emily Shane Foundation Butterfly Release that they do every year, and they raise money for the Emily Shane Foundation. And then Rick and I also had a conference call with the Superintendent of Schools. Thank you for going to that meeting and reading our letter, Jefferson. Just a couple of things coming up, Riva and I have a Council of Governments meeting tomorrow morning, and then I will be heading up to Santa Cruz to do a, I have a meeting for leadership for the League of California Cities, I'm going to be Chair of the Environmental Quality Policy Committee, so we're going to be planning next year's meeting. Just to let you know, a couple of things, Riva mentioned the party, and this Wednesday is our next Library Speaker Series, Marcus Erickson. It will be at the library, and he is a scientist, and will be talking about his boat made of plastic and his adventures with that. It's a really interesting talk. And then on Thursday, the city will be doing a screening of straws, which is looking at all of the issues with straws and plastic straws. And then this Friday is the Business Roundtable Meeting at 8:30 here at City Hall. On the 9th of December is Breakfast with Santa, and that's usually at Point Dune Marine Science School, so that it's still there. And I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Lou?
Thank you. As Laura said, we, Rick and Riva and Laura and I, went to the National League of Cities, not the California League. This is the National League that covers literally 19,000 cities across America. And in addition to the seminars and the panels, I was able to get the sober living homes resolution that I've been working on for a long time passed. It started, as you know, back, thank you. We started this back in Cleveland, and we went to Henderson, Nevada, worked that there, and finally back to this committee in Charlotte, and the Resolutions Committee, then the official business meeting for the entire league. And the one thing that this proved to me once again is that this is a national bipartisan issue. Everybody in every state has this issue in one way or another, and it's just getting worse. So this resolution that we did calls on the federal government to reexamine the Fair Housing Act Amendment, and in light of the opioid crisis and the rise of these exploitive businesses that are taking advantage of this law, and as well as the patients that are trying to recover, and the neighborhoods that are hosting them. And I also wanted to especially thank Rick, Riva, and Laura for their unbelievable support through these almost endless meetings, and thank you, I really appreciate you guys being there. Now I'm going to take this resolution in December to Washington, along with a delegation of over 100 Southern California cities to Congress. We have meetings with senators, congressmen, also the departments that, housing, et cetera, and any department that's going to have any effect on this at all, there are meetings set up with. This will begin the obviously long journey to actually making this change in the law that's so necessary to everybody across the entire country. And there was one other thing that happened to me when I was in Charlotte. I went to a seminar, it was called Solutions for the Homeless, and that seemed like a really good thing for us to be involved with. And the way it was set up, there were, instead of just one speaker, there was a series of tables for maybe 10 people apiece, and at each one of these tables, there was a professional in the homeless area. And so the concept was, 10 people from various cities would find a table, they'd sit there and have a discussion, a group discussion with the professional. And you would stay there for 25 minutes, and then go to the next table, and there were three of them. As soon as I sat down at the first table, someone saw my tag that said Malibu, and said, "What are you doing here? You guys banned the homeless from eating." And I said, "That's not true." And eventually, I explained what actually happened, which was not that at all, and that ultimately, the city of Malibu is not a bunch of heartless people, because that's essentially what was the message that I was getting from these people from Alaska, Kansas, Alabama, Ohio. And it took a while to finally get that straightened out, and then I went to the next table, and exactly the same thing happened again. And these were 10 other cities from across the country. So I just wanted to make it clear that the person that sent this message out in the first place, that started this viral disease, they didn't just affect the city of Malibu. The people that they really affected were the people that I know and you know, that actually go out there and work on a daily basis to try to make sure that homeless people get fed, and try to make sure that homeless people try to find a home. I know that all of those people, they're friends of mine, and the fact that their reputation is just besmirched by this kind of thing is just beyond me. So the next time you want to do this, you ought to think about the fact that you're not just affecting the city and getting a headline, you're actually affecting everybody that is actually doing something for this. And the other thing I just wanted to say is, I saw this article in the Malibu Surfside News by Lauren Cochran, who actually, the headline says it all, "The Truth is Worth Digging and Waiting For." This was an actual balanced article, where she actually went and found out exactly what the truth was, and this is the kind of reporting we should have in this city. I know Hans Letz also did the same thing. So there's, that's the kind of news we should be having in this city, not some of this uninformed misinformation that gets sent out there. And that's what I got. Sorry, thanks.
Thank you, Lou. Rick?
I too went to Charlotte for my first time at the National League of Cities, once again on the bunny slopes, it's kind of good. And while I was there, I attended several seminars, one that I was very interested in, which is for an organization that's acronym is NOISE, noise, and it stands for National Organization, it's basically for dealing with airport noise from planes, and they've been in existence for 40 years, and it's sort of the national version of this roundtable that I went to at LAX, dealing with the next-gen system, and all these new air traffic control routes and altitudes that are causing problems throughout the country. And it was quite interesting, there were people from the other side of the table, it wasn't just people negatively affected, there were industry representatives and that type of thing, and the chairman of this is actually on the Next Gen Advisory Board. I think the chairman of that advisory board is like the CEO of FedEx, so we're getting closer to the source. And as I craft the road ahead to rectify the problems that are affecting primarily everyone in Malibu, but primarily Big Rock area, I'm getting a better idea of how to formulate a coalition with other nearby cities and elected officials, et cetera, and we should be able to piece together some simple course of action that suggests that the solution, because I always like to provide the solution to the people you're complaining to, not just complain. And I think it has to do with raising altitude primarily, but also taking those planes on that new route and putting them back wherever it was they were before. That will take some doing, but we're moving ahead on that, so I just wanted to let everybody know that there's progress being made, and my attendance at this conference put me closer to the source, so that's good. And while I was at the meeting, you know, there's Mina from Thousand Oaks in the back of the room, and she's like, "Hey," you know, I'm like, "Hey, Thousand Oaks, Malibu, let's get together after this." So we did. And I think all those Calabasas, Agoura Hills, all the nearby cities are having the same problem, so that will help us. I was contacted by a gentleman by the name of Ward Johnson, and he told me a cool story that I have to pass on to you, and I think it's true, I think it's true. And he basically said that, if you guys are familiar with the seal of the County of Los Angeles, and it has, amongst other things, it's got a tuna, and it has some oil rigs and a ship, and it's got a cow on it. And he told me this story, and then he sent it to me, so I'll read it to you. In 1957, Los Angeles County Supervisor Kenneth Hall redesigned the official Los Angeles County Seal. Although, just before he sent it around for approval by a majority of the Board of Supervisors, he showed the new seal to Merritt Adamson Jr., who owned the Adore Farms, who were a major dairy supplier, dairy milk producer for the county. Merritt took one look at the seal and asked what the animal in the right corner of the seal was, because it looked like a malnourished dog. Supervisor Han told him that this was a cow, and it represented the dairy industry within Los Angeles County. Merritt immediately replied to Supervisor Han that if a cow were going to be depicted on the County of Los Angeles Seal, wouldn't a championship cow like the one named Perlet be more desirable? Supervisor Han promptly agreed, and Merritt sent him a photo of Perlet to be depicted on the official County of Los Angeles Seal, and Perlet remains on the county seal to this day. So we got a little imprint from Malibu on the seal of the County of Los Angeles, so I wanted to share that with everybody. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Rick. Wendy, I know that you left, and I just wanted to thank you for bringing that to the council's attention. I think as Riva said, that there's not, you know, we're going to look and see what we can do. I would suggest that if we got flashing lights remaining right now in the last standing tree, that we ought to request that those get removed sooner than later. I want to wish everyone, hopefully you all had a really nice Thanksgiving holiday. Next week, we're going to have a small meeting with a couple of the different groups that are involved in homeless outreach stuff within our community here at City Hall. And Thursday this week, as Laura mentioned, I would definitely ask anyone that's interested in our environment or the ocean to come and check out the straws movie. You can sign up for that by going to straws eventbrite.com, it is free. Check it out, I believe that they're also going to have some food as well. And George, I really appreciate you coming and sharing what you had to say about the meal service here in our city, and I think that the goal of our community is to work that we can get the best resources in place to all the members of our community. And I think that, you know, what Lou referenced and whatnot, what has gone on is, people, you know, I think that I miscommunicated in a meeting, I have already said that, I think that that's been clarified now. I was a little bit astounded to hear that the church stopped, decided on their own account to stop doing the meals. But again, the city has no authority to tell a church to stop serving meals, and I think that we will come to a better location, you know, if that program continues here in the city, which I'm sure it will, hopefully sooner than later. And I was, you know, frustrated to hear that they had stopped doing it for, you know, and that was on their own accord. All right.
Can I just add something?
Yeah.
Did we have a chance to adjourn a meeting in the memory of Ronald Rinj yet?
Yeah, I think we did.
If we didn't, then may I make that suggestion, and Leon Cooper as well?
I think we did.
Okay, so Leon Cooper, could we adjourn the meeting in the memory of Leon Cooper?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Did anybody pull anything from consent, Heather? No?
I just want to say for the record that I cannot vote on 3B4, so I just wanted to take that out, because I am on the Board of KBU, so I didn't feel like I should vote on it.
Right, you don't need to take it out, we'll just note the, for the record, the extension on 3B4.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And that was for the consent calendar, sorry about that. All right, 4A. Sorry, 6A. I apologize. Land funding options, funding options for land acquisition, we have Brian Forbath from our Bond Council here.
We have Brian.
Did we have any public comment on anything, or no? Okay, all right.
Just very briefly, earlier this year, the council revisited the purposes of the ad hoc committee regarding bond measures and land acquisition, and so as a follow-up to that task, I had asked our special Bond Council to come and provide an update to council on some of the funding options that we have, so I'm going to let Brian give his presentation, and I can answer any further questions, or he can afterwards.
Good evening, Mayor Peake, and members of council. Brian Forbath, thank you. It's good to be here with you all again this evening. So I have before you just a short presentation that sort of highlights probably the two main financing alternatives to, if the city were interested in financing open space for more money than that it couldn't afford from the general fund, and wanted to spread the costs. The two main methods would be, you want to go to, is there a clicker up here? I'm sorry. Oh, right, thank you. The two, it's a trick. The two main methods would be either through a general obligation bond offering, or a, what's called a community facilities district. General obligation bonds, as I think most people are familiar with, mostly in the school financing context, or from the state level, there's not as many city general obligation bonds, but there has been quite a few. And the main points on the general obligation bonds is it requires a two-thirds voter approval, and it's an ad valorem tax, so that the costs of financing the bond are spread based on the values of properties, with more expensive properties paying more than lower-valued properties. And those values are based on what's on the current assessment rule for the county, so it's based on your current assessed values. An important thing to note on general obligation bond is, there's really just for financing An important thing to note on general obligation bond is there's really just for financing brick and mortar improvements, or the acquisition of, of property in this case. There's not an ability to, in the general fund con, general obligation context, to raise revenue on an annual basis to pay for the operation or maintenance of the facilities or the land that's acquired through that. And then second, and the last point is just elections are more restrictive. They have to be held on general election dates for, you know, general state, county elections. And the most, the upcoming one is, which we'll talk about, is June 5th. Community facilities districts were, that law was established in 1982, and it was really established as a, a tool post Prop 13 to help local agencies finance the acquisition and provision of public infrastructure throughout California. It also provides for the acquisition of, of real property. It, like a general obligation bonds, requires a two-thirds vote of all registered voters. And that's because it's a special tax. And any bonds that are, that are issued would be secured by that special tax. The difference between the general obligation bond and the CFD is that the special tax of the CFD kit is not an ad valorem tax. By, by statute, it can't be based on the value of property. And so what normally happens for community facilities districts is the taxes are based on a variety of methods, with commercial property maybe paying one rate, residential property, single-family homes paying one rate, multifamily condos paying different rates. And all of those rates need to be based on some sort of rational basis. It's not like an assessment district where it has to be a special benefit. It just has to be a rational basis for spreading the tax. It also allows the ability for, if the council were so choose, that if the improvements or whatever that were to be financed were only really benefited developed property, that you could set up that developed property gets taxed, and undeveloped property doesn't get taxed. It also allows the ability to exempt public property from the taxation. Public property would be exempt underneath the general obligation bond construct because it wasn't having assessed valuation. The CFD, the CFD does provide additional flexibility in that you can raise annual revenue to pay for ongoing maintenance and operations of whatever the project is that you're financing. And there's also greater flexibility in terms of what the date is that you choose to have your election. And you can have it just about on any date that you want it to have. So the next slide was, and I want to caution that this is sort of pretty back-of-the-napkin math here in terms of, of what we're showing here. But we, we requested the city's bond underwriter and their assessment engineer to help sort of quantify what would, what would the burden be on property in Malibu based on a general obligation bond, or based on a community facilities district bond, under some very just basic assumptions. And the, the main assumption was that we want to raise $100 million. Underneath the general obligation bond, as you'll see, that translates into roughly $32.72 per $100,000 of assessed valuation, or approximately $747 per parcel based on the average parcel assessed value in the city. Again, that's an average. This assumes that the assessed valuations increase 2% annually in accordance with Prop 13. They go up annually by 2%. And that's to match annual debt service on bonds that would escalate by 2% additionally. Now, with the CFD, as, as I mentioned, there's a variety of ways to structure the tax in terms of how much is, how much the burden is going to be on residential property, how much is going to be on commercial property, what, and what's, you know, how, how you want to structure that. So without having any insight, and we didn't want to make any assumptions about how the council would want to do that, we just said, alternative one, spread the tax equally on every parcel at the same rate, regardless whether it's a developed, single-family home, it's a hotel, it's a $100 million commercial property, just on a per parcel basis, what would it be? And that's roughly the same amount, roughly $747,000, I mean, $747 per year, sorry, with a 2% annual escalation that would go up each year. Alternative two was, well, what if, what if there's a determination from the council that undeveloped property in the city doesn't really benefit that much from these properties? And so whilst undeveloped, we're not going to tax that property. We'll just tax the developed property first. And underneath that scenario is roughly $941 per year. And then, again, there's a 2% annual escalation. And as I've mentioned, there's many different structural alternatives. And if, if, you know, the council at the end of the presentation, they want to give us direction to go back and present or look at other alternatives, we can do that. There's lots of different ways to, to structure this.
And, and Brian, that would be, that payment would be based over a 30-year period?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And also, the, the hybrid that you're about to talk into and mention, the hybrid ways of doing this could also be a combination of GOs and CFDs.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah. So just to get you all thinking in terms of the timing of this, because it's sort of a long process to get to where you want to be. If, if you want to start thinking about raising money soon in order to acquire this property, really the first date that you're really going to be able to do this is on the June 5th election of next year. And the reason why is there's a whole steps, sets of circumstances that have to be met in how you get to the June 5th date. And the main one is, the county and statute requires that, in order to consolidate the election with the general statewide elections, you have to request from the county to consolidate the elections at least 88 days prior to the election date. So that sets you back in March. And then, really, the next step would be, you know, in order to get to that date, there's a fir, a couple of first things that have to happen. And that is, you have to enact an ordinance, call in the election, and adopt a resolution requesting the consolidation of the county. And that has to be at a regularly scheduled meeting prior to that 88th day. So just looking at the calendar, I went back, and February 26th was the last regularly scheduled meeting you had, assuming you stick to the same calendar next year, prior to March 10th. And then, the step before that would be, in order to enact the ordinance on the 26th, you have to adopt a, a resolution of necessity and introduce the ordinance calling the election. Now, that could be done at a special meeting, but it has to be at least five days prior to the enactment of the ordinance. I just chose the, the meeting prior to that, because that would fit that criteria, and that's February 12th of 2018. And so, as you, you can see, there's not a lot of time between now and February 12th to determine whether, you know, most cities or agencies, when they're going to do general obligation elections, will do some sort of polling, some sort of community outreach to gauge the interest of the community in that. And i, if that's the direction that the council would like to go, time's ticking on that aspect of it. Just in, in terms of comparison, as I mentioned, the CFD election can be on almost any date, but it, it really is a, a longer timeframe than the general obligation election. And, and that's really because what, what's happens is, for the CFD formation, the first step is to, is to adopt a resolution of intention to form the CFD. And then you have to hold a public hearing at least 30 days after that. And then after you hold that public hearing, which calls the election, the election cannot be any less than 90 days prior to that. So when you back that all up, it really means if you were to try to meet a June 5th election date for a CFD, you really would have to start back in January of 20, January 22nd would be the adoption of resolutions of intention. And then you could have a public hearing 30 days later, which would allow you to hold the election on June 5th with the county. And again, just wanted to highlight that, because there's, if, if, if that's the direction of the council, there's a lot of work obviously to get done to do that. It's, the work on a CFD is much more intensive than the general obligation election. And that's because we have to really sort of structure what is going to be the, what we call the rate and method of apportionment, how, how you're going to tax the property in the, in, in the city. Are, are you going to treat all residential property the same? Are you going to treat residential property that's on a acre the same, that's on a 5,000 square foot lot? I mean, there's all of those, those different things to think about. You can, based on square footage of the lot, you can base it on square footage of the house, et cetera, and the same for commercial property. So those are all things that'll need to get considered. And I know this was a very high level, and we can go into as many more details as the council would like, but that was sort of our goal, was just to sort of summarize potential options and to present them. I don't know, Riva, if there's anything else.
Question?
Yeah.
When, with both of these, either general obligation or the CFD, do you have to specifically identify what your, the use of that money is? I mean, down to the piece of land you're going to buy, or?
No, I, I don't, you wouldn't have to identify the exact property. I, I think you could identify that you would use the money to acquire open space as it becomes available in, in the city of Malibu, et cetera. You know, obviously, the risk that you run is, is one in terms of voter approval, and, you know, maybe it cuts both ways. If you're more specific, maybe the voters like that. If you're more general, maybe they don't, or, or vice versa. But there's not a legal requirement to say, we are going to acquire this property on Stewart Road with the bonds. But I think it would be sufficient to identify sort of a plan of financing that would, you know, say, the city's goal is to acquire and preserve open space in Malibu, the public approve the issuance of not to exceed, you know, $100 million in bonds to accomplish that.
I also wanted to point out that you can word it, so you have a maximum amount, but you don't, we wouldn't need to bond for that immediately. So as projects became available, if we had the authority up to a maximum, we could bond for it multiple times.
Yeah, you, it could be done over a series of, of ti, of series of events. First of all, for, just for, a side note, for federal tax law purposes, you need to have a reasonable expectation you're going to spend the money in three years. So you, you would want to issue bonds to coincide with actual acquisitions. And so if, if it was unreasonable or unfeasible to acquire all of it at once, and it might be over a five to seven-year window, then you would structure a multiple series of bonds. And, and back to, I think it was, as Mayor Peake asked, or I'm sorry, maybe it was Council Mayor Wagner, it would normally be 30 years, but if, 30 years from each bond issuance. So if, if the first bond issue was in year one, but there was another, not another bond issue until year seven, you would be structured so that the taxes would be levied for 30 years from the last bond issue for, in, in year seven, so 37 years.
I have a question. Two-thirds of registered voters.
Correct.
So that means if you've got, let's say, 10,000 registered voters, but only 1,500 ever vote, you still have to get the 6,600, or whatever it is.
Two-thirds of those who cast their vote.
Oh, cast their vote.
Vote, yeah, yeah.
Wow, that's much easier.
Yeah.
It said all registered voters. That's what I read it.
Sorry. I, I should have been a little clearer on the wording there, yeah.
No, I'm glad I asked that. That's, that's a big difference.
Yeah.
Also, you mentioned that you could select to take some of the properties out of that bond. So for instance, City Hall wouldn't bond its, we couldn't tax ourselves at City Hall if we had not owned this building off, you know, without a mortgage. But we have a mortgage on this. And secondly is, how does that affect the Standard and Poor's and the Moody's ratings if we elected not to take the city properties and then tax them with a bond measure?
It won't affect the ratings at all. And the, the city of Malibu has a double A plus under, a double A plus rating on its debt obligations. And that is based on a lease structure, which assumes that a general obligation bond of the city of Malibu would be a triple A rated credit. And the difference is, the general obligation bonds would be secured solely by the ad valorem taxes that are levied in the city. The city's general fund would not be at risk or pledged to the repayment of that bond.
It's completely separate.
Correct, yeah.
And the, and the securing asset is completely separate.
Correct, yes. Yeah.
Thank you, Brian, for this. So a, a few questions. And, and Rick, even though you said, oh, it's only the people that vote, two-thirds is really hard to get. That's what you, we needed, you need to get for parcel taxes for the school district. Actually, schools now are the only ones that can get 55 or 50-plus one.
Fifty-five, yeah.
Fifty-five. So it makes it a little easier for school bonds. But two-thirds is really, really difficult to get. But two things. If we did the CFD, can you do a writing? I mean, so can you do it all by mail? M-A-I-L?
Yeah, I, I believe you could do. I have to research that a little more, but I, I believe you could do it as a mailed ballot for the, for the CFD.
Okay. Which then, of course, decreases the costs a lot if you don't do it on the, on a general election date.
Election date, yeah.
Right. And then, having been involved in a lot of campaigns for bonds in the past, school board bonds, and college, it's really important to do the polling, because we did, the three or four times I've been involved, you find out, you really get a sense of our people, if we went up doing the regular kind of bond, if people are willing to spend $20 per $100,000 of assessed value, or $30, or 25, you really get a, a pretty good sense of doing that. So I think that that's something, if we are interested, we should definitely put some money towards that. So, that's all.
All right, Brian, I have a couple of questions. So kind of on the lines of what Laura was asking, I, I think that sort of the, the general reason for, for asking you to come and, and do this is for us to, you know, there's been many comments from many people in the community about acquiring more land, acquiring more space, and how to do that. And this is probably the best tool that the city has in order of generating a large amount of funding towards that. And it puts, you know, our, a way for our residents to put their money where their mouth is when it comes to doing something like this, essentially. And so I, I would, you know, like Laura referenced, I would be very supportive when I was doing more polling. My, my question is, in, in terms of that polling, would we, do most cities poll, like, do you want a, the, the GO or the CFD? Or is it like, select one or the other, poll, poll that? Because I, the, there's a big variation here in some property values. And I, and my, my fear is, not fear, but I think the reality is, you have somebody with a helm on the beach, where it's a million-dollar home, and the home next door to it is on a property tax basis of 20, or 30, or 40 million dollars. So now this person is spending X amount, and the next neighboring property is spending, you know, a different amount. So I think that that, that threshold might be a little bit more difficult to, for us to get, but I wouldn't know until we did polling.
Well, I, I think the, the polling, when you're doing polling on this, and there are companies that specialize in this, I don't think Brian would be doing the polling, but there are companies that do it, and they kind of lead you along. So if you're willing to do this, tell me about if you're willing to do that. Like, somebody might say, oh, okay, I could do $10 per $100,000 of assessed value. Okay, but if you knew that you could preserve open space, then would you be, would you do $20? So they kind of lead you along, and they ask you all different kinds of questions. I, I think the point that we're going to have to look at is, what, we have to determine what our goals are first. So is our goal for this to, to preserve open space, to be able to, you know, get land for ball fields, to be able to build a cultural arts center, all of those different things? And then, how much would that be involved, you know, how much would we discuss that in the polling, things like that? But that's something that we would need to decide before we do this.
Several of our clients who've done sort of larger projects like that in the past have sort of put together a, a plan, whereas it's, it's, you know, a, a good example would be the city of Vista, which we did many years ago, where they did like a civic center plan, where it was, you know, city, new city hall, it was parks, performing arts center, and all sorts of stuff. It presented in a plan, and then, then they polled that. But I, I'm, I'm not all that familiar with the polling aspects of it. I, you know, we, we've dealt with a some, but that would be something that the city would want to, you know, talk directly with a poll, with a polling agency about how the best to go about doing it.
Well, I think then, before I go into more questions, I think we would probably want to get some more of that, those polling things answers. And I think that this kind of gives a little bit of a base for us, you know, in terms of information and which direction to go. My suggestion to the council would be that we ask for maybe staff to reach out to a couple of different polling companies and, you know, proceed forward with getting sort of an understanding amongst us as to what that stuff would be used for, and move forward on, along those lines.
I think the first thing before we do that, I mean, I think we can do that, but we have to, and it's a process. We have to figure out, well, what are we asking the money for? You know, is it to build something? Is it to preserve open space? Is it to?
Combination of those.
Get fields? Is it, well, yeah. And I would imagine that it will be a combination. And, and then I think Brian also mentioned, how specific do we want to be? Do we want to be, or, and as Riva said?
Or how specific do we have to be?
Well, it's not- Well, it's not have to be, but it's, are people going to want to tax themselves if, if they're just saying, okay, well, the city council gets $100 million and they're going to do with it what they want? Or if you write into the bond that at least half of it will be used for land acquisition and the other half for building public amenities? And, or a quarter of it will be for permanent open space and X amount will be? I mean, you don't have to say it's got to be, you know, a baseball field, but you, you know, I think that that brings a certain amount of certainty to some of the voters.
We would like voters to have certainty. All right, so, go ahead.
There are a way that we can do that if the administration finance committee began to put together some kind of proposal to bring back to the council so that we could discuss it.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that would be probably a good avenue, but I don't know, I was going to ask Christie just in terms of any acquisition or things like that, if that has to be discussed. You know, the land acquisition is sometimes discussed in closed session, so I didn't know how that would, would make a role into that.
Yeah, no, we would, that would be an open session. The only thing we ever talk about in closed session are the price in terms of payment when we're about to make an offer. It's a negotiation thing. But no, we would do that in open session.
Riva?
I was going to make a suggestion on a follow-up item that staff could bring back, an item to council with perhaps some costs and suggestions to move forward with some polling and a list of projects or a project description list that council could consider. Would that be helpful?
Yes, Rick?
Yeah, it'd be helpful. You know, I've been looking at your timeline, that, we got to start like yesterday on all that stuff, so yes.
But it doesn't have to be June. I mean, it can be, it could probably be somewhere, I wouldn't even do it in June. I'd probably do it when kids come back into school in the fall.
Okay, just to, to remind the council that the
One more thing I was going to say.
Santa Monica College will be coming back with a bond in the fall. Just an FYI.
I just, real quick, one more question. Can a bond acceptance or a bond proposal that's voted upon by two-thirds pay a municipality back for a purchase of something that was mentioned in the bond? For instance, if the city were to buy a park piece of property and said to itself, we would like to pay ourselves back for that piece of park property, is that something you can put in the bond and mention it during the election?
That could be included. It would have to be specifically mentioned somehow in the, in the bond materials. I mean, the tricky thing we get is, you know, you get 75 words in your ballot provision, and so it's hard to, to put that all in. But there, there, I, I believe there legally speaking, there would be the ability, if it was approved by the voters, to, to reimburse the city for that. The other issue, though, that we have is underneath federal tax laws, there's certain restrictions on the ability to reimburse private, prior expenditures with tax-exempt bond proceeds. And you can usually only reach back 18 months from the actual date of the purchase, so.
Hey, Brian, Rick?
Yeah, one last comment. Laura, to clarify, you're right, two-thirds is a steep hill to climb, but it's not insurmountable, which I think the, all registered voters would have been, so, thanks.
All right, Brian, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So Christie, do you have enough direction on that to, to get some stuff? Okay, I mean, Christie, Riva, thank you. All right, back on to the schedule here. So we're back to 4A. And we have a public speaker and a small staff report. Is that going to be Richard? And Bonnie, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. What you have before you this evening is an amendment to the local coastal program as well as to our general plan, or excuse me, municipal code overlay map. The site that you see highlighted in red is located within the La Costa overlay. And currently on our maps, it is shown as one parcel, including the parcel below it there, the parcel directly to the south of the red parcel. This is a copy of the overlay map for the La Costa overlay district that's in both the city's municipal code as well as in our local coastal program. And as you can see, the lot is designated with a different color, and it's shown the two lots as one. Staff's done some research and determined that those are legally two separate lots. And what we're proposing essentially is to pu, to separate the two lots so they're no longer shown as one lot. And then also to change the designation of the lot so that it would be like you see the other lots that are directly to the left of it, that purple color. That purple color designates a downhill or a D-type lot. And the development standards for a downhill lot essentially allow you to start at the street and encourage you to follow the slope down. The way that it is currently identified with the A-type, that is an uphill lot. And those development standards encourage you to start at the street level and go up. Essentially, if you were to build the house on that property today under the current designation, you'd end up with a house that would look vastly different than the neighboring properties, which are all about 14 to 15 feet above the street grade and follow the slope. Under this type of development standard, you could go up to 28 feet. So you'd end up with a home that's roughly twice the height of the neighboring properties at the street grade. Staff has been working with the applicant through this process, who is also the property owner, and they are aware of the zone change and also supportive of it because the, the current development proposal is that he would like to redevelop the property with a home that is similar to the design of the home that burned in the 93 fires, which was a downhill design. Staff recommends adoption of the ordinance, which would approve the local coastal program amendment as well as the zoning map amendment. The zoning, once this process is complete here this evening, if approved, we will then submit this LCBA to the coastal commission for review as well. I'm available for any questions as well as the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Are we have one public speaker? Is that Michael Barmas?
Good evening to everyone. The applicant, Mr. Chapman, is here, and we, we support the, the staff recommendation to adopt the resolution. Well, ready to answer any questions.
All right, cool, thank you. Counsel?
So I read this, and it doesn't sound like anybody has any problem with this, right? Okay, and it actually, in, in reading it, it, it sounds like if they went ahead and built with the, with the erroneous information in there, that he would have been able to build something a lot bigger on the uphill lot, right?
You are correct. He could have built on the lot and it would have visually appeared to be a much larger house because the height restriction wouldn't be in place.
Great, so it sounds like it works out for everybody, as far as I can tell.
Thank you.
Real quick for myself, so that if the council helped in pass this resolution, then the two parcels could be developed separately. And hopefully that those homes would coincide with the homes, because I've driven up there a lot of times. And some of those homes are nowhere near 28 feet, so I would hope that the, the applicant would respect the elevations that are currently utilized along Hildago. Is that what I could hope?
That's correct, yeah, absolutely.
And you, so we'd let the neighbors know that it's a reduction in box size. You'd have two smaller boxes instead of one big box.
Right.
In simple layman's terms. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
So I'd like to move the staff recommendation.
So the motion on the floor is to introduce on first reading an ordinance of the city of Malibu determining the proposed map amendments to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and approving local coastal program amendment number 17-002 and zoning map amendment number 17-004, amendments to the local coastal program and Malibu municipal code title 17, La Costa overlay district map to correct a mapping error to identify the parcel at 3816 Paseo Hildago Street as a separate parcel from 3849 Rambla Oriente and redesignate APN 4451018088 as type D lot.
All in favor?
Aye.
I said, I did. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we are now at 4B, which is the appeal of 17-003. Richard?
What you have before you this evening with this item is an appeal of a local, of, excuse me, of a coastal development permit that was issued by the planning commission in May of last year, or, excuse me, this year. This is a vicinity map, aerial photo of the property. It's located below the, the Big Rock area, and it is essentially a vacant lot that's part of the Pacific Coast Highway and is located between two multifamily structures. This lot is currently developed with a wooden staircase. There are some viewing platforms or storage platforms, a drainage outfall from the highway, and then a fence with a, it's a chain link fence roughly about three, four feet in height with a gate at its eastern end. The applicant, which is MRCA, is proposing to remove all of the existing development, reconstruct the area with a new walkway down to the beach that's code compliant, some landscaping, a guardrail along Pacific Coast Highway, a picnic and viewing area that'll be at the grade of the highway. The proposed staircase requires a variance because they're tucking it in against the hillside, which is a steep slope, and it's going to have one of its piles located within the hillside. And then there will be a new fencing gate located along Pacific Coast Highway to secure the site. This is a photo from 2013 showing the area of the project. And the sand in this beach does fluctuate. There's periods of time where the sand is washed out, and it's primarily a rocky beach, and then at other times, there is more sand. This project has gone through a total of three designs. This is the original project design that was submitted when the CDP application came to the planning department. The staircase there is in the middle of the parcel, and essentially, it's a straight staircase leading out to the beach. We had asked the applicant if this was the most landward design option. Our coastal engineer requested that the applicant cut the staircase back somehow so that we did not encroach as far seaward, put a turn in it or do something different. As a result, the applicant redesigned the staircase and resubmitted plans where they changed the staircase design to add a landing and then an angle to it. And what this did was pull it back further landward. This design went before the planning commission in December 2016, and it was approved by the city's planning commission. However, it was determined later that the note, there was a noticing error for that hearing. The notices that were sent out to the property owner addresses, those notices all contained correct information. The notices that were sent out to the occupants, so now this would not be the mailing address that, of where your tax bill go to, goes to, but essentially just the address of the properties along Pacific Coast Highway and addressed to the attention of the applicant. There was an issue where the zip codes were off, and the majority of the occupant labels were not, they did not reach their destination. And as a result, the meeting was re-noticed and we came back in May. However, the appellant during this time had come forward, and he was the one who also noticed the noticing error. He brought that to our attention. The appellant then explained that he had some concerns over the location of the staircase and use of the beach. And as a result, MRCA did work with the appellant, and they submitted a third design. That third design moved the staircase further to the east, as you see in this photograph here. The staircase still projects as far seaward, but instead is, as I mentioned, to the east. And this was done in an effort to open up the area of the beach as requested by the appellant. This design was then once again re-noticed and brought before the planning commission was approved in May of 2017. The appeal for that hearing cites that there were three areas of the approval that were in error. And one of those areas was first off, consistency with the local coastal program. The appellant stated that this proposed design is not consistent with the chapters regarding scenic findings, shoreline development, and public access. Based on the review and the materials contained in the record, the planning commission determined that this was in fact consistent with the local coastal program and all of the applicable chapters. And this design does comply with the requirements and provide the necessary access to the beach for the public. The second contentious, item of contention was that there was a lack of a fair and impartial hearing. The planning commission, this notice, did review all of the materials in the record. They also reviewed their previous approval and determined that the relocated staircase was consistent with the local coastal program. They also considered the public comment as well as testimony from the appellant, who mentioned various issues he had with the proposed project. And after that discussion, it was still determined that this was consistent with the local coastal program and was approved. The appellant also discusses that this decision was contrary to law. This proposed project is consistent with the policies of the local coastal program in that it does improve public access. Currently, we have public access to a site that staff, as well as the applicant, cannot find any permits for. The wooden staircase that's there, the fencing and the viewing platforms, we're assuming were built by the residents in the area, and there appears to be no standard to which those access items were built to. So that we will end up with as part of this project is a code-compliant access. It will be properly permitted, it will be inspected and built per plan. The appellant also brings up some other issues which have to do with the spending of tax dollars. How this project is funded, how MRCA is utilizing the state's funds. It's not something that is considered by the planning commission. The planning commission didn't look at that. We don't have any standards for that. Staff recommends that the council adopt resolution 1748, denying the appeal and approving this coastal development permit so that it could then move on to the coastal commission to go through their appeal period and eventually take effect. Thank you.
All right, do we have the appellant?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You have 15 minutes. We also have a couple of public speakers that will come after you.
Okay.
And then you will have time for rebuttal. So my question to you is, how much time would you like to reserve for rebuttal? You have 15 minutes, and you can reserve as much of that as you'd like.
I would reserve five minutes unless I use less.
Okay, yeah, if you use less, it will be added.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. It's, it's nice to be here. I, my wife and I purchased a property at 20516 Pacific Coast Highway 10 years ago. But I have to say that I am old enough that whenever I pass by Duke's, I have to point out to my kids that it used to be the Sea Lion, because I remember going there quite a lot as a kid. And, and my mother actually went there with her parents when she was a child. So I, I'm, although newer to Malibu, not completely new. And we really enjoy this, this home and especially the public beach next to us. And I, I've always been an advocate for public access. And I, I think this hearing is interesting because you probably don't very often have appeals where the issue is not access but enjoyment. And if you look at, at all the regulations and the rules and the findings, it says, will the project enhance and improve the public's ability to enjoy and to access the coastline? We're not debating access here because, as you'll see, there is already public access on the speech. We're talking about enjoyment. And there's simply nothing in the record that shows that this project would increase, at least this portion of the project with the staircase, would increase enjoyment. As a matter of fact, I'm certain, and everybody who uses the beach is certain, that it would decrease enjoyment of the beach. So let's look, if you can, at the, at the screen. This is the image, the only image that was presented to the coastal commission. You'll see the big white border. It's actually an old picture from before we bought and remodeled our home, so it's at least 10 years old or more. And you see the big white border, and now I'm going to show you what that's hiding. And you see the big white border, and now I'm going to show you what that's hiding. So here's the more modern picture, I think, that the staff also presented from 2013. You see over in the, in the far right, there's that staircase there. And I have some other pictures, just, you've all read the reports, so I want to just give you some visuals. This was the original, or at least the second plan, the one that was approved without proper notice. Here they do show the, the new staircase and the old. The old is, is supposed to be removed under this plan, so they were going to build right in the middle of the beach. It really, if you go back here, really the, the prime beach location, which really upset me and is why I became engaged in this. Because why would you want to put a staircase in the middle of this tiny beach? It, it would absolutely decrease the enjoyment of the beach. It is the best spot. So I argued against that, and when they found the noticing error, they agreed to change, and they moved the staircase now over a few feet on the other side of the drainpipe that's there. But it still is going to take away of the three spots to sit on the beach, one of the three spots. So it's not as bad as it was before, but it's still bad, and it's going to decrease enjoyment. And that's really the whole issue here, is, is there anything in the record about this increasing enjoyment of the beach? Because that's as important as access. If you can't enjoy the beach, even though you can access it, it's really, it's, it's worthless. So here's the issue. It's already a public beach, and I'm going to show you. Now, this is the overlay, if you take their map and you put it on the beach, so you'll see that it really comes right in the middle of that whole section there. The MRCA argues that, well, they measured the, the square feet of the stairs, staircase, and it's only one and a half or two and a half percent of what they calculate as the beach. But that assumes you want to sit behind it, you want to sit next to it, you want to sit at the landing. No one wants to come downstairs and plop their towel down at the bottom of the stairs. You need to draw a, at least a five foot and maybe ten foot circle around that staircase to find where people are going to, to be. And just to give you an idea, that staircase, they say, is about fifteen feet wide. The whole beach maximum from end to end is a hundred fifty, so that's ten percent of, of the total. And the height of the beach from the water up varies, as they say, with the tide. Sometimes it's zero because the water goes all the way to the end, sometimes it's further down. So, but if you, if you draw a sort of reasonable circle around that and realize that really only the upper part is usable beach, you're seeing that you're basically destroying that section of the beach, okay? Which doesn't increase enjoyment. So let me show you a few more pictures. Here, of course, is the stairs. Someone wanted to take wedding pictures down there. You know, they make a big deal now that I've complained about the code issues, but the stairs were built by Marcus Oliver. He's a Lifetime Local here in Malibu. He and his family, his daughter, comes down with their friends almost every day, rain or shine, and he built these, he built these stairs, at least he told me he did, before we even came in to the picture. They're fine. No one's ever had any problem with them. They don't look terrible, I think. They may not be permitted, but again, their own plan requires a variance from the code, so it's not like their, their new staircase is perfect either. Here's the entryway. It could absolutely be improved. I have no problem with them reconfiguring the gate and the access there. Let's see some more pictures, if I can get this. Here's my dad, who's eighty years old now, walking down the stairs. There's a railing. If they wanted to put another railing, no problem, right? Here they are again. This was during a rockier portion. I'm going to show you what the beach looks like. This was from the summer. We weren't there over Labor Day or Fourth of July, which are the really busy weekends, but it's a very busy beach. It gets traffic, gets fishermen in the morning, it gets public during the day, especially in the afternoon when the kids get out of school, and of course, on the weekends. So here you see people relaxing exactly where that staircase is supposed to be, right? Especially the guy with the orange towel there. That's exactly the landing of the stairs. And I just don't think putting a staircase there is going to increase anybody's enjoyment of the, of that portion of the beach. Here's a broader picture of the whole beach from our deck, so you can see people various. This is at low tide, beautiful, high sand. This is as good as it gets. You see a lot of people on it. Here's what it looks like much of the time, especially in the summer when we don't get good tides. The good tides, as you know, are mostly in January. So sometimes it looks like this. You see the water going all the way up. Here's what it looks like also at various times, right? No sand at all. Matter of fact, the, the landing of their stairs is on the only sand on the beach, right? Right there. You can take a look at that. That's where they want to put it. Here's another, yet another picture, just to give you an idea when it's really nice. There's, there again, this is the, where they want to put the staircase over on the left side of this. It's a little rockier there that time. That's what it looks like sometimes, right? So giving you a little bit of an idea, this is a view from that staircase over, and they want to put the landing right in that sand right there. And this is what it looks like without sand. A little bit different. Here's another picture. The sand there, that's where they want to put the, the staircase landing. That's the beautiful drainpipe from the Big Rock development that we have on our beach. We tested the water when we moved in, it's actually perfect. And I have some pictures from the other parts, which we're not really talking about today. So the, the, really, the issue for you today is, is there anything in the record that shows that this staircase is going to increase anybody's enjoyment of the beach? And from my perspective and from the perspective of people actually use this beach, and I talked to other people over the summer, no. Everybody's fine with the existing staircase and the location of the existing staircase. The owners over there were fine, they're actually selling now, so that's for sale, the, the other unit on the other side. At one point, when they were still planning to go down the middle, I said, put it over on our side even. That's, that's how ridiculous this, this project is. I think for the, for the last minute or so, I want to say that I still cannot understand what is driving this project. This was four hundred thousand dollars that is supposed to be used for new public access. We all know what that is supposed to mean, okay? It does not mean this. It does not mean moving the staircase ten feet over onto a beach. And I, I think the MRCA has just yet to explain what it is that they are doing with this money. I don't think it's what was ever intended when that, that Larry Ellison project was approved, and he gave that four hundred thousand dollars to the MRCA. We need public access in Malibu, and you can't be wasting it on ruining a perfectly good, already public beach. So I'd like to reserve the rest of my time unless there are any questions right now for rebuttal.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have the applicant. Is Paul here? Paul Edelman, and Paul? How much time would you like to reserve?
Oh, I think two or three minutes will do it. Honorable members, I'm Paul Edelman with the MRCA, and we appreciate the staff report, and we concur with all of its findings. Really, the bottom line in this, from our standpoint, is, is that the, the public access right now is not adequate. And in some way, you have to get down to the beach to have adequate public access, to enjoy the beach. It's about a seventeen foot drop to go down, and the MRCA's project is, is about as narrow as a staircase could be. So it's pretty much of the most de minimis project you could propose to bring public access to this site. And we feel like the, the staff report and our letter have really addressed all of the appellant's concerns, that we adjusted the project, and the staircase has to go somewhere. And it's, it's something that's going to endure over the course of time, something that's safe, something that's, that's, has the ability to withstand whatever the sea can throw at it. And we really feel like it's the best thing to do to at least bring enjoyment to the beach so that people who don't want to walk over big rocks to get down to the sand, even in the best of conditions, can reach the beach. So we have the project manager here and myself to answer any questions, and we urge you to deny the appeal and approve the CDP. Thank you.
Okay, Jessica, did you want to add anything to that? No, thank you. Okay. We have one public speaker, Norm Haney.
Good evening, council members. Norm Haney, two two seven four one, Pacific Coast Highway. I want to start out by basically stating that staff did a great job in, in their staff recommendation, and also that I do not represent the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy or the, the MRCA, Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority. But I do believe in property rights, and the public owns this beach, and they have a right to use it. And right now, the only way they can get down to the beach is over some stairs that are not well marked and are not built consistent with the development and safety standards required by this city or by the state. So when you say that building these stairs does not add for public enjoyment, well, it absolutely does, if you want the public to be able to get to the beach safely. Right now, what is there is a huge liability for the state of California, because they allow those stairs to be there, and they don't meet any of the safety standards that are required. Yes, I was there today at the beach, and it was beautiful. The rise in the stairs is higher than it ought to be, and the last step was about fourteen inches, far enough for someone to trip and break their leg. Now, I'm happy that no one has, has damaged their, their body in, in using those stairs, but it's around the corner. The MRCA looked at all of the options, thanks to the neighbor. The neighbor did a good job at bringing up some issues. So they did look at all of these issues, and they made a determination as to what was best for the public. They represent the public, and I think they've done a good job in this case. The stairs that they're planning to build will be consistent with all the safety standards and will be properly signed, and my guess is there won't be the six foot high chain link fence that, quite frankly, yells out to everyone, this is a private beach and you're not welcome. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Norm. All right, council, I'm sure that there's probably a couple of questions.
I have a question.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
My house actually looks down on this beach, so I see it all the time. I, I don't think I'm within five hundred feet of it, but I see it all the time. And I can tell you that the public does use it and frequently. And on summer weekends, you see a lot of cars there, and they're not the same cars all the time, and people are on that beach. So obviously, it's being used. But I also understand the liability issues with that staircase. And so, Mr. Edelman, I have a question for you. I appreciate the fact that you guys moved the staircase further over. That helps it. Is there any reason why you can't move it even further over where the staircase that exists now is?
Lou, hold on a second. Richard, can you put up the, the slide that shows the current proposed project for reference, please?
Mr. Mayor, I also wanted to mention, I'm not sure where rebuttal is going to fit into the, if you were going to ask questions first or how you wanted to do that.
You can go ahead. I mean, I don't, I mean...
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll do, yeah, I think that this is going to be a little different than normal.
All right, so the question is, that's the new place you're putting it? So can you put it further over towards where the old staircase is?
I don't know if we've done all of the geotechnical work to see if that can be done or not. It raises the issue of then putting that house closer to that owner and whatever issues they have about having the public come close to their, their house.
Well, they were right next to it before, so apparently they didn't have any issues about it before.
Well, it's a, it's a different structure, and it'll be well signed and that type of thing. So it, it's not, it's not in our interest to want to do that, to build it and construct it that close to the property line. So I can't categorically say it's impossible, but it's not, it's not our desire to do that.
I, I, I think that what, what Lou's sort of getting at here is, and there was a discussion here about enjoyment of the beach, and Jessica, I see you probably might have a reason for why it's right there. Go ahead.
Yes, if I may, I want to add on to some of the reasons why we... Yeah, sorry about that. So if I may, I want to add on to our considerations for putting the staircase at its currently proposed location. And the reason why, there are a few factors why we decided not to replace the new stairway at the old stairway's location is because, for one thing, we considered minimization of land use conflicts. So we wanted to provide a sufficient buffer between the adjacent property and the new stairway in case in the future there would be any land use conflicts with the adjacent neighbor. And additionally, in some of the photos, you may have seen that at the current entrance to the current stairway now, there is a fire hydrant up by the roadway there. So it would be configuratively challenging to place the stairway there and have a gate right there where the fire hydrant is in order to get down to the beach. And currently, where the current gate is, some members of the public would need to trespass onto the, the adjacent neighbor's property, onto their driveway in order to access the gate and access the current stairway. So we, again, wanted to provide that buffer and minimize land use conflicts with the adjacent neighbor.
I got a question about that land use buffer and conflicts that you said. Was that in response to any concerns expressed by any of the property owners? Is that just you being proactive based on your experience dealing with the public in the past?
We wanted to be proactive, especially with the level of controversy of public access in Malibu.
Okay, another question I have is, in the, in the depictions, I see it's like an L-shaped stair. What's the deal with the L on the bottom of the staircase?
The L-shaped stairway, again, it was recommended by both the city coastal engineer and, again, with our project coastal engineer to angle the stairway laterally to deal with wave uprush action as it hits the stairway.
Okay. I, I have no more questions.
Jefferson?
Thank you. I've visited the property, actually today, I've been there before, but today I visited the property, and somebody's manicuring the street side of it, probably one of the homeowners. Appreciate you taking care of the area, whomever is doing that. But going down the stairs, the little gate that's there, it's, it's, doesn't have a lock mechanism on it, so you're able to access it all the time, and I know you'll address that if the project goes through the way you plan. But I considered the wave uprush as well, and the current mounding of rock to the eastern side, that house that's there where the gate is, is substantial, and that would really provide your stairwell a lot of protection if it was further toward the eastern home. So as I climbed around in the rocks, I also realized that there's a great deal of water that comes through that thirty-six inch pipe there. There's a little pond in front of it. When was the last time you were there? Do you remember that little pond that they've built? That's to break that flushing water that comes from PCH and up the hill and the dewatering that goes on at Big Rock. I've been there. When that water's coming out, it's half pipe full. It shoots out a good fifteen to twenty feet, and it scarfs the, the beach away every winter. So if you were to move forward with the project, in common sense, I'm not an engineer, but when you sit there and you look at it for a few minutes and make assessments of knowing a little bit about the water and the behavior of water, the longer lasting stairwell is going to be over to the right, to the eastern side of this property. I know you have your engineers, and we could get our engineers, but you have a property owner here that says, we don't have a, a problem with the stairwell. It's the placement. So for me, I didn't look at it that way. I looked at it, what makes sense? And center of the property is not as good a placement as further to the east. That's just my assessment.
Yeah, I want to make a couple of comments, too. I went out there.
Can I, if we're going to start deliberating instead of asking questions, I think we should do the reply first, the rebuttals.
Just stick with questions that you guys have right now for clarification, and then we'll go to rebuttal, and then we can go back on, back and forth. Okay. Laura?
Well, Lou asked my main question, but you mentioned about, I can't remember the expression, like, not property rights, but that you were concerned about the property, the house right there next to the current step.
The buffer zone with the residential property.
Well, the, yeah, the buffer, and, and you said something about future development or something, but they, they couldn't develop more. Their property line is their property line. Or are, are the current steps on their property?
Oh, I should clarify. By future, I mean a future resident of that property might not want, for example, a public stairway right next to their home, such as the case with a lot of other public access ways that we have, which are right in between homes, and we've had a, quite a substantial level of controversy with those. So I'm considering in the future, if it's a different... So I'm considering in the future, if it's a different owner that may not be okay with the stairway being right next to their house.
Jessica, if I may, just add on to sort of what Laura's question is, the future owner is going to buy the house knowing that the stairwell's there already. There's already a stairwell there now. So it's hard to sort of, the problems that you're referencing that we've seen with the easements is not always so much a new owner. It's an old owner that then has a new stair access, or a current owner, where then there's then a new proposed access, where then there's concern. I know in the Carbon Beach area, there's concern from a new owner that's there. But folks, if you go and buy a property with a stairwell right next to it that belongs to the public, you ought to know you're buying a property next to it with a stairwell that belongs to the public. I don't think that, from what I'm hearing from one of the neighbors that's the appellant here, is that that's not so much the issue. Did you have any other questions, Laura? Hold on. We'll get there. Does anybody have any more questions before we go to rebuttal?
Yeah, just, did you actually consider putting a staircase, you know, compliant with appropriate safety regulations, et cetera, in exactly the location of the existing staircase? Because when I went out there, that looked like it was the one that was almost ergonomically designed to have the most minimal impact on the beach. So I'm just curious, did you think about doing it exactly where it is?
Again, to put the stairway where it is, we would also have to situate the entrance to the stairway on the Pacific Coast Highway so that it faces the Pacific Coast Highway. And from some of the photos that you've seen, there is a fire hydrant right there on the eastern corner of that site. And so to put an entrance there, we would have to...
So the fire hydrant was a limiting feature in your decision to...
Yeah.
Maybe a fire hydrant would be good, though, because then no one would park there.
Exactly what I was thinking when I was there. I was like, "This is really cool that the hydrant's here now that you've got basically a guaranteed entranceway to the top of the stairs because there's not going to be a car here." So that, I mean, that's what I thought when I was there.
That's where the emergency responders would probably want to park.
That's to access the accidents on the beach.
Okay, we're going to go to rebuttal. And then, so I believe that we'll start with the appellant, followed by the applicant.
Thank you.
And you have about, you have six minutes.
Great. Thank you. I think you're identifying the issues. And the frustration I've had is that Jessica's been super nice and I haven't spoken with Mr. Edelman, I think, but I don't get the feeling like they're, the actual designer's willing to have any dialogue. I tried to talk to the contractor and he wouldn't even answer my calls. So I think these things could be worked out if they were told at the MRCA, work them out. The neighbor, actually, I spoke to her, they don't have any other stairway on there. So that is their stairway. So you're actually moving their access away. And when I told her that, she's like, "Ugh, that's terrible," but I mean, I'm selling anyway. She's selling her land lease. So I want to start by saying, there was no presentation at all about enjoyment by the MRCA. They essentially are conceding this project will decrease enjoyment. And that's part of the findings that were required to be made by staff and the planning commission. And the appeal says, "There are no facts to support the finding," right? That's the basis of this appeal, not to be too lawyerly, but the basis of the appeal is there's no fact in the record that would show that this would increase or enhance enjoyment of the beach. In fact, it's to the contrary. It'll decrease enjoyment. As for the issues, supposed issues of the stairs, there is also nothing in the record and no indication that they've actually looked at this. You remember, the original plan is straight down the middle. That's what they were looking at because they just looked at this like, "Here's a place to access the beach. Let's put a staircase. Let's have a great ribbon cutting and PR. It'll look great from PCH and not worry about what happens when you get on the beach." That's what went on there. And all of these explanations about the other stairway are only in response to my appeal, basically, to my argument. There's, again, nothing in the record supporting any idea that there's some problem with these existing stairs or that they need a buffer or that there are liability issues, which I think there are not. The beach is not to code. The new stairs that they're proposing are also not to code and require variance. The city council could grant a variance today on this existing staircase if they wanted to remodel and add another railway or, you know, add another step or whatever they wanted to do. It all can be done and it should be done, keeping in mind enjoyment of the beach. So I think you're all seeing the issue that I'm having here, which is people like to use the beach. They want to continue to use the beach. And there's no reason just to give a PR opportunity to the MRCA to ruin part of this beach. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schoenberg. Paul? And Jessica, sorry.
The key thing is that the current staircase is not safe and it's not permitted. And so as far as material in the record about enjoyability, it's the difference between, there's no sort of legal, safe enjoyment now, whereas this proposed project would create that. As far as the wave-uprush and the durability that Councilmember Wagner brought up, there is still a lot of rock in front of where the staircase is proposed. So yes, it would be a little bit better in terms of durability to move to the east, but a lot of that rock protection is where we have it. In addition, if you put a landing way over to the east, it's in a lot crager of an area where it's going to require a lot more drilling and it'll make it a lot more difficult to move from that landing onto the beach. So as far as spreading out into getting access to the beach, this is something the coastal commission staff brought up, too, that not having it go at the edge, there were some benefits to that. And anything else you wanted to add in terms of any questions? So if it comes to be that moving it over three feet is within the purview of staying within your ability to approve, to deny the appeal and to approve this permit, that's okay. I mean, if there's the ability to do it and it doesn't get in the way of the fire hydrant and the fire department doesn't have an issue with it, and it's all things we haven't explored, we thought moving away from a fire hydrant makes a lot of sense, that the MRCA is comfortable with that. However, if it means going back and starting over, that would be a real, a really sad event in the sense of moving forward with public access, just in terms of the cost and expense of producing the plans and going through the process. So I don't know whether the staff can answer that question about whether, if there's enough latitude to stay within the parameters of the permit to move three or four feet over. I don't know.
So if I can get some clarity on what you just said, that you're open to the concept of having it more in line, possibly, with the existing staircase? Hang on, hang on.
Okay.
As a modification to approval, rather than, you know, throwing the whole thing out and starting over at the blackboard?
I wouldn't say more in line with the existing one because that really gets you into some territory where geotechnically with the rock and the landing, it doesn't work as well. But moving more in that direction to solve some of the issue that the appellant brought up and some of the council members are bringing up, absolutely.
What do you mean, "It doesn't work geotechnically"?
That, where you would have to put the landing in on the beach, there's potentially some solid rock there. And whether or not the footing up on PCH, about a room and space there, work and all that, that has to be explored. So you can't just willy-nilly, not all the conditions aren't exactly equal.
You're saying that would require a little more work?
If they move the stairs, there's going to be more work that's required.
Not necessarily. If it's within reason, it could be a small amount, I would imagine.
Yeah, I mean, I think sort of what my concern would be is that, you know, while at this point, yes, a lot of money's been spent on this, but a poorly-designed staircase can cost the public a lot more in terms of redesigning it again than if we try to just get it right the first time. So I think the reason for the conversation, the reason for the appeal is because clearly to nobody, it made sense to stick a set of stairs down in the middle of the beach, right? We agree on that and now we're getting to the finish line where we have something that's a little bit improved. Did you guys ever try a staircase that zigzagged? Or was that not an option because it's too cost prohibitive?
I don't believe so. We started out with what the coastal commission staff wanted and worked away from that towards where we are now. Do you know about the zigzag design?
We have...
That would be something with two landings. So it would go one to a landing and then zag and then to another landing. So you actually reduce your exposure to wave-uprush by completing that kind of a task. If you go up to Leo Correo, you'll see that some of those state park stairs have two landings to reduce their exposure to the wave-uprush.
We have not considered a zigzag design, but I would imagine that it would take even more space on the beach to do a two-landing stair.
Take less space on the beach and more space on the hillside, which is not usable by the public anyways. So my, in understanding this, Richard and Bonnie, the reason for the appeal brings up this idea of enjoyment. And has any data been presented to show that this would increase enjoyment of the beach? Because I see none of that in the record at all. And if that's what the issue is, I couldn't go forward with approving something if that's what the concern is.
Mr. Councilmember, legal access as an increased enjoyment? Safe access?
I just asked if there was any data. I think that it's been shown from one side that there already is access. We've clearly seen that people are using it. I don't, to my knowledge, there's, one, there's no public safety history of having 911 calls from this area where people are falling down the stairs. And on the other hand, we don't have people that are calling us saying we can't access the beach there because there's no stairs, because there clearly are stairs. I want safer stairs there. I get that. I don't disagree with you on that. I was just curious to know if there's any data that referenced this enjoyment aspect. Sounds like just bad language to me, but...
I don't think that that was any of the three things that he was basing his appeal on. I think he's brought it up, but I don't think those were the three things that he based his appeal on.
He based his appeal on page 29. There's three paragraphs there. There's deeper definition on page 29. You'll see there's three paragraphs that pertain to it directly.
So the policy that the appellant has referenced is in the land use plan. And so it's a policy, it's not a required finding necessary to approve this project, but in the spirit of enjoyment, as the applicants have discussed, from staff's perspective, this provides a legal-permitted, safe way to get to the beach and provides additional amenities of, you know, this proper fencing and designated parking. It's on-street parking, but the whole thing will be more apparently available to the public. And so that's the perspective that we looked at it. We support the way that the applicants have worked with the neighbors to adjust the location of the stairs.
Bonnie, was there any reason why you guys didn't have, why the stairs can't be moved over, from your understanding? Because to me, it would be much wiser to locate the stairs in an area where you have rock structure that will protect them as opposed to sticking them out on a sand area that's going to wash away.
My concern about having them overlap in the rock area too much would be if that rock serves as some sort of shoreline protection for the house next door. And if there's, if there are changes to that, then that could involve more coastal engineering review. I don't know what, whether the house next door has a seawall or relies on that.
Doesn't look like there's a seawall there. It just looks like a rock revatment.
Right.
And Paul already said they're willing to move it three feet.
Yeah.
So let's start with that.
Yeah, so from that standpoint, I would suggest, yeah, moving it over as far as possible that keeps it off of that revatment in a way that would not affect the coastal engineering or shoreline protection for the house next door.
So I read this report and this is a beach I've never been to before. You know, I've seen the opening there. And I read it and I looked at all the pictures in detail and I drove out there today. And I parked very near to it, actually, I parked in front of the fire hydrant. But I had my flashers on and I work for the fire department, so I was hoping they'd give me a break. But I actually did think, hey, this is kind of cool that the entrance to this is right by the fire hydrant because that means no one's going to park there. So when I was standing there, I didn't say, "Oh, bummer, there's a fire hydrant." I actually thought, "That's kind of cool." And while I was there, a gentleman came walking by and he said, "Hey, I'm trying to figure out how to get down to the beach." I'm like, "There's a gate right there. It's open." And down to the beach he went. And when I stood there and looked out at this beach, it looked like the pictures that I saw in the staff report and in the appeal. And when I looked at the pictures, I thought, you know, it kind of makes sense that the existing stairs are, would be the, they seem like the least obtrusive, I would put it that way. And when I went out there, you could tell that the stairs had been built by somebody who actually cared about the beach. I mean, it was the least intrusive, I would say, in a way. It was biologically, ergonomically built into the rocks. It was almost like it was grown from the rocks, you know? It was built by somebody who cared about the beach and spent time at the beach. It was obvious. And it's a really short run of stairs. It's not very long. It didn't appear to me to be unsafe at all. I mean, it has a railing there. It was easy. It actually looked like, and you know, look at some of this, when I go to some of these stairways to beaches, for example, at the Point Doom Headland, now that's a seriously steep staircase. And I'm surprised we haven't had fatalities in that one.
Doesn't stop people from going down there.
I know. But it's, that one is seriously steep. That's a safety issue. This one is a very gentle grade. When I'm looking at it, I'm thinking, "This is the place for this staircase." Because the staircase goes over rocks. Obviously, these are rocks that are never covered up by sand, as far as I can tell. Because I met a woman who lived, not at that house, but the next one. And she came out and talked to me and gave me the history of the beach and said, "Yeah, in the wintertime, it's all rocks. There's no sand." And kind of told me the history of the whole beach and gave me her perspective. And it was, it's obvious, when you look at the pictures, your pictures are very convincing, that the existing location of this staircase is the best choice. And, you know, I'm looking at this picture right now with the thing. Can you put that back up on the big board so everyone can see it, the one that's on my little iPad here?
Or maybe the one that has the photo that's the overlay?
No, I want the, because look at the contour lines, okay? So the existing staircase is over on the east side where the contour lines, i.e. the slope of the rocks, is gentler. And they want to put the staircase at the place where the contour lines is the steepest. So in other words, the staircase is going to have to sort of jut out into the air or be super steep. And it's obviously going to go out into the air and be more obtrusive visually on the beach itself. If you look at, on the side, you can still have a gentle slope. And the existing spot, it's not a very long staircase at all. It brings you right down to the business end of the beach. Doesn't, it doesn't interfere with the business end of the beach, I'll put it that way. I think you made a very convincing case. And let's think about all these little pocket beaches and all these little accessways that are problems and friction points. And I do appreciate you guys being proactive and thinking, "Hey, let's try and get ahead of the game here and minimize our problems with the residents by making this stairway away from this building." Well, it's already by the building. It's already there. It's been there for a long time. And they make a great point. It's the guys who've been there a long time that all of a sudden get something introduced where it creates a problem. This is an existing beach. It's obviously used a lot by people who like it and care about it. And the stairway is, was chosen, I would say, by those who love the beach to have the minimum impact on the beach itself. It's put in a wise location. I actually think it's good to be by the fire hydrant. So you've got a natural entrance there. And in my view, this is a great instance of a public accessway that's embraced by the neighbors. They want the staircase there. They don't have a problem with it. They just want it to be done in an intelligent way. And let's make sure that it's not just like $400,000 looking for someplace to be spent. As it gets to the spending phase, let's make sure that it's spent correctly and that it's done in a way that everybody's happy with it. In particular, the people who are going to access the beach with this new staircase, they don't lie there and say, "Well, I'd really like to put my towel down here, but there's this frigging metal staircase that I, you know, it's taken up all the nice spot of the beach." It should be along the rocks. There's not much sand here on the best of times. And to have the staircase intruding into the sand at all is really kind of silly. The location of the staircase, as it is now, is the best location, I think.
Can I make a point, Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely, Paul.
Our engineering team recommended we put it where it is based on looking at all the factors in the record, the geotechnical, other issues. And people are coming up with ideas to put the staircase more to that side, not based on that.
We're, no, but we're, I think that what I'm hearing is that that's clearly based on photos that show when there's beach, when there's no beach, when there's a half a beach, when there's three-quarters of a beach, as far as the sand flows in the area, so...
Well, I'm talking about in terms of its integrity and how it fits bo, both with the conditions at PCH, the conditions down below. And to just willy-nilly say you wanna move it over and that that's better geotechnically isn't supported by anything other than just vi, visual. And if you just look at, look at the, the way the, the contours of the beach turn there, where the turn in the staircase would be, those are vastly different conditions than the more, uh, neutral conditions where we currently have the turn and the final caisson. So it, it's not, it's not as if these, the, the, it, all conditions are equal just to move it over, just because it, it might look a little better. And think about it, it's, it's a minimum thirty-seven-hundred feet of sand on the beach in a worst-case condition, when there is some sand, sometimes it gets, you know, up to six thousand square feet. And you think of a staircase in a house, in a, a house of that size, the staircase doesn't take up that much room. It's really a de minimis feature on the beach, and to say that it's gonna ruin the enjoyment of the beach, the staircase needs to be somewhere. This works. We urge you to, if it's within the ability of not, of approving the permit, to move over a little bit and to let us, send us on our way to build it and provide the public access, we're okay with that. If not, we urge you to go with the staff recommendation and keep it as it is.
Thank you, Paul. I think Laura has a couple of questions.
Um, yes, uh, how, how long has the staircase been there?
You know? Don't know. It's been there ever since we, uh, we, well, became a, a prize of the property and, and found out that State Parks owned it. And it looks like it's been there at least four or five years at least.
Well, the, um, the appellant said that it was there before you moved in?
Yeah, so I think it's been there at least ten years.
If you could come just to the mic.
So, well, he said that it was at, at least ten years. You said that it was there before.
We bought the property in, in two thousand and seven, and, and I believe it's been there. It may have been remodeled, uh, a little bit, but they've, they've had, that's been the access point, the public access point since we first went to the beach.
So it's lasted at least ten years? So it, it, so, um, it couldn't be that bad of an area if at least it's last, lasted ten years? I guess what I, what I understand what you're...
It doesn't come down to the beach, though. It comes only halfway down to the beach. Of course it's still there. This, it, it, there's a, a whole several meters of rock from the bottom of the staircase down to the beach. That's comparing apples to oranges. Excuse me.
No, that's okay. And I, and I, I, I take seriously your, and we do have a tendency sometimes up here to, to re-engineer things, and none of us are engineers. So I, I respect what you're saying with that. But I, I do question when you say, well, maybe we can move it over a few feet and maybe we can do that. So that if you can do that, why can't we, why couldn't you look at the original place and rebuild them there to make them safer, to make them up to code and that? So I would recommend that you re-look at that. If that is what the neighbors and what people who normally use the beach, if we're hearing that it might be a good idea to have the fire hydrant there, could you come back, look at whether they could be rebuilt there? I'm not, I guess I'm not hearing that, yes, we really studied where they are now, um, and we determined engineeringly, I know that's not a word, and for other reasons that they could not be rebuilt there. And I think what you're hearing now is, hey, that seems the most natural place. They've been there for a long time. It seems you're not impacting then the use of the rest of the beach. Could you go back and look at, yeah, let's, let's see if we could rebuild them there to make them more compliant with the rules that we have now? Maybe bring them down a little lower and see if we could do that and make it the easiest.
Yeah, uh, when I asked you that, you said the reason you didn't look at that is because of the fire hydrant. I, I say, let's live with...
Multiple reasons. It was also because the Coastal Commission wanted it where it is. And secondly, to...
Paul, did you?
They wanted it more not, not next to the houses.
Okay, I, I understand that concern, and I think I, I think our community does really appreciate that concern and, and being sensitive to the residents and whatnot.
And State Parks, as the property owner, didn't want it next to the houses either.
Because State Parks doesn't wanna get complaints from the homeowners about the public.
That could be.
I'd have to tell them in a beach that's a hundred and fifty feet long, if someone's gonna be loud, the homeowner that's right there knew that they bought the house next to a public beach, and you ought to expect to hear some kids screaming and et cetera, et cetera.
And actually, if the, if the, if the staircase is next to the house, the people are gonna sit away from the staircase, so actually that would be the quietest part. Because then you're not gonna have people sitting right there because the staircase is there.
We're talking more about the users of the staircase as opposed to the people on the beach was more the design.
The, right next to the staircase at the house is, is a parking space. It's not like a deck right there, right by the staircase. It's just a parking area.
One more thing. I, I have to emphasize that where the fire hydrant is now, it blocks the top of the landing of the stairway. If we were to put it there on the side where the current stairway is now. And like I said, the gate in the corner there now, the reason that I see in the corner there now is because it, the gate can't be in front of the fire hydrant because it blocks the entrance to the top of the landing of the stairway. So the current gate where it is now, people sometimes have to walk onto the adjacent neighbor's driveway, trespassing in order to use that gate to get down to the current stairway. So, um, we, we move it over. Essentially, the top of the landing now is, would, would be really close by to the fire hydrant, and it would be essentially almost next to the fire hydrant now in order to get down to the beach.
Richard or Bonnie, can you guys put up the slide that has the photo with the, uh, plot lines o, overlaid on it?
If I could say, I, I don't, I've never understood why, since they're redoing the fence and making that little walkway, why you can't have a path that goes this way to the stairs?
I was gonna say that, but, I just wanted to do it on a photo.
I stole your thunder. Sorry.
Do we have that slide? Okay, he's working on it. All right. I think our, our goal is to get you guys an approval and get something that works with the two. That's, we're not, that's what we're working towards here. It's a question of how we're gonna get there. I, I think that we're almost there. Yeah, I do.
I was gonna say that. Okay.
I do. I think that we're almost there.
And I also want to...
The laser?
Call your attention to, um, the slope erosion. Some of the photos may not, uh, some of the photos actually clearly show that the slope has been eroding away, um, just, uh, due to beach erosion. So to have a stairway nestled as it is now in the current location, you would have to think geotechnically what that would do to the stairway if we were to keep it in the same location.
The, the stairway that you have there now, that would be going down to like a bedrock or something? Not bedrock, it's just gonna go down to the dirt, correct? And then as soon as the sand washes away, it's gonna be hanging there?
No, no, it's on a caisson.
It's on a caisson, down to, down to a solid structure. Okay.
And look at where it's located. It's in the place where there's the most beach erosion.
Yes, I see that.
Protect, protect the slope.
There is? There we are. Okay. This is the old staircase. This is the new staircase. This up the, the, the top area right here, you guys are concerned about a gate going right in this area cause that's where the fire hydrant is, right?
Yes.
Okay. This staircase comes over here. There's no objection from this council, nor is there objection from the neighbor. So I think that you guys have to figure out a way to design this so that it lands over, this landing is somewhere in this area, and these stairs come down to the beach. This makes the, the bulk of the beach more available to the public, and it makes the access, the idea would be easier. If you can't access straight this way, you have land at the top here where you could move the gate and just have a, a short little four-foot fence that would guide people to where the, the larger entrance is. And I would hope then with this accessway, that the goal for the MRCA is that you guys are gonna open and lock the gate in regards to beach hours. And my reluctance in approving anything along these lines is that in other areas of the community, we have nothing but problems and complaints from neighbors where these accessways have gone in. I know this one's already there and the gate's open all the time, but our homeowners and our, our public safety resources gets, get taxed, and we have problems related to people burglarizing homes and accessing from the beach late at night, people lighting fires, people starting fires with fireworks in the brush, people getting super drunk and wasted on the beach and then driving on Pacific Coast Highway and killing other people. We wanna make sure that this beach is secured for the neighbors and for the entire community. I think that you guys can do that by erecting a proper fence, making sure it's locked, and moving the stairwell over to provide the maximum enjoyment, enjoyment of what is the beach and sand area for the public. And I, I think that, I am not an engineer. I have asked engineers to do these kinds of things before. They have figured out ways to do them. And I think that if I'm correct in terms of the council, as, as a whole, I don't think, we're, and, and we're hearing from the public, that there's not really objection of, of to it moving over there. So if we can move it over ten or fifteen feet, I'm not sure the exact distance that's on the map, but closer or an overlay of the, the area, um, up here, that's where, oh, I don't know what I did there, but, oh. Where this old stairwell is, that you guys have a stairwell that's approved. You guys can start construction really soon, and we have satisfied customers on both ends of the block. Richard, in terms of the engineering and whatnot that you guys need from them for the studies with this, that's sort of all things that can be submitted over the counter to staff and does not need to come back to the planning commission or, uh, the council. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. That's something that could be reviewed in the plan check process. Once again, the only concern that we can see at this point is they're getting too close to those rocks. Those rocks may wrap around and form a return for that home's, uh, shoreline protection device. And if the applicant starts putting a pile within those rocks, it could trigger a requirement of an upgrade on the shoreline protection device, at least the, the return on that neighboring property.
So if they were to take the stairs then and move them all the way to the, they were right adjacent to those rocks, would that still do that?
I think you are, I think you, what you're proposing, it would work, uh, probably because you wouldn't be touching the rocks. That would be correct.
And then, of course, the, the al, the actual, the other alternative would be an angled stairway from the, the corner of the property, where it would just come right down to wherever the dirt meets the sand, and this would not be an issue. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so we have a couple of different options here. I don't know. I, I would make a motion that we would approve the project with it lying, um, uh, adjacent to the, the stairwell, the existing stairwell on the east end of the property line, and approving a, uh, the fence and locking hours for the area, hours that the, the beach is open to the public, and assuring that the MRCA will have the, the, the resources and it's staffed accordingly. Mic on?
I think we need to be a little more specific as to what we're approving. Because it sounds like you're, what you're saying is move it over somewhere, and it's approved. I think we need to be specific on where, final location.
Uh, Richard, what's the distance between the proposed stairwell and the existing stairwell in linear feet?
It's roughly about fifteen feet from the, the most eastern portion of the proposed stairwell to the, the existing stairwell on the property line there.
So would that be the existing, the existing stairwell to the eastern portion of that existing stair, stairwell or the western portion of that existing stairwell?
Eastern portion of the existing stairwell, right to the property line.
And, and the property, and the existing stairwell is approximately three feet in width?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so then it would be approximately twelve feet if it were to go, I'm just like following the rock line up off the beach in the, the photo and the depiction. Jefferson, does that make sense?
Yeah, yes. If you visited the, the property, I was there today, Rick was there yesterday or today. That's what's, what is there right now is what you just described.
So, Richard, this distance, that's from this end of the stairwell here to this end of the stairwell, or like if we were to move the, the center point of this to right here, it's approximately twelve feet. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So I would just make a, the motion that we approve this project under the guise that that stairwell has moved over twelve feet. And, uh, I, Rick, do you want to come back to us?
I'd like to see the final version. I'd like to see the final version.
We could do it as a consent calendar item, couldn't we?
Uh, yeah, we can do it as a consent calendar item. So revised drawings back to the council on a consent calendar item so that if it's pulled and people have objection to it, it can be looked at, and then you guys are good to go.
If, if the, uh, engineers show and staff finds that it does impede the protection of the adjoining house, can that twelve feet reflect that data as opposed to just willy-nilly and move it over twelve feet? There's, if you start to get into affecting how the waves of, uh, hit the rocks next to that house, that opens up a whole other can of worms.
Putting the stairwell well right now would affect how the waves are gonna hit that house, so I don't, yes, of course it's gonna do that.
Might affect it in a way that...
It's a negative?
Is more negative.
Can we just say approximately twelve feet?
Approximately twelve, three.
I really like that better.
Okay, yes. That's, that's fine. And I, I, I also then, just to be clear, the, the accessway at the top, if you guys have an issue with the fire hydrant that's there, you know, make it, you know, put a little jog in it so that it comes out in a different place cause you have some flat area at the top there, and I think that that's completely within the purview of what, what we're requesting you guys to come back with. Is that, you guys follow me on that? Uh, so at this area up here at the top of the stairwell, you may have to have it kinda jog back this way. Not, not necessarily the stairs, but some part of the flat area where the gate entrance might be a little bit offset.
We can make that work?
Yeah, and you just guide the public, you know, with a shorter fence to where it goes.
I, I'd, I'd be happy to work with, with them on this. I, I would love to have some direction from the council that they consider enjoyment because there's always going to be a trade-off in, in pinching one thing or another or another.
I think that, I think that what, what I'm trying to be clear in is, in, in maximizing and improving that enjoyment.
Right.
We're, we're improving it by making a safer...
Right.
Stairwell with safer access. And we're doing that by, by minimizing the impact on the sandy area of the beach.
Right. I just, I, I know that's what you mean, but I, I think the MRCA needs to hear that.
I think they understand that.
Thank you.
I'm really enjoying this part.
Okay. The thing that I enjoy the most about this is how often is it, do we have a property or an appellant come up and say, I'm willing to work with them to get that done? So thank you for that, and I hope that that can happen that way.
I hope you take deference that if the homeowner on the other side comes and complains and files an appeal, that you'll take that into consideration.
I'm sure that we would.
Thank you.
Yeah, the appeal period is done at this point.
Are we, we are bringing the resolution back?
Yeah, so you're gonna just bring it back with the drawings on consent calendar? And if there's any, you know, we, you know, we'd have to deal with at that time cause you're not gonna have both the appellant and the applicant coming and submitting the plans to you. Although if you did get a letter from them that said it was a high-five, that would probably be wise.
Just, just in case there's, um, some engineering snag that we don't know about, let's continue this, um, public hearing in case we need to hear about it. Otherwise, it'll come back to you on consent.
What's our next meeting?
Uh, to the first meeting in December.
December eleventh?
December eleventh. Does that work, does that work for you guys? Mon, Monday, December eleventh?
Yes, that works.
Thank you.
That, well, that means that by December first, we have to have plans.
Oh.
No.
Okay, so it'll move, it's gonna move then to the first meeting in, we, I'm asking you guys, it would go to the first or second meeting in January, cause we, our second meeting in December is dark. So, um, I don't have a calendar on me. January tenth or January twenty?
January twelfth.
Sorry, it's the Wednesday. Yeah. The, the first meeting in January is on a Wednesday, which is January tenth. And the second meeting will return to our normal Monday, uh, schedule on the, the fourth Monday of the month. Which would be the twenty-second.
Let's, let's take the second meeting in January, please.
Okay. And if, and, and, and if for any reason we had a, a different, do we have to make that decision now? Or they would have to notice it, and we would have to have it on a public hearing?
Yeah, we're gonna continue the public hearing to the twenty-second so that just in case you have, it's really for you, in case there's a snag and then we can't, don't have to waste time re-noticing. So that's the best way to do it.
Okay. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Oversized vehicle parking restrictions. All right, we have, uh... Is this Sean? Oh, yo, what's up? I was like, I couldn't read it. Um, yeah, we're gonna have a staff report first, and we have one public comment.
The item you have before you this evening is for a citywide ordinance on the parking of oversized vehicles. This would be specific to just vehicles that meet the oversized definition, whether they be commercial or non-commercial vehicles. whether they be commercial or non-commercial vehicles. The proposed ordinance would have exceptions in it for active loading and unloading of commercial vehicles that are engaged in some sort of local delivery. And then also for non-commercial vehicles, there would be an exemption for vehicles that are part of a construction site or building permit, something that's either in a construction management plan or that there's an active building permit. And the purpose of this would be to prevent the storage of heavy equipment on Pacific Coast Highway, which has taken place in the past. For the non-commercial oversized vehicles, there would be a two-hour permitted parking period between midnight and five AM. The purpose of this, and it's as, as written specifically to non-commercial vehicles, is that we wanna provide the opportunity for visitors to the city to be able to travel through town, park during the times when the visitor serving uses, such as the beaches, Malibu Pier, and that's primarily why this is so late midnight, because of the pier's closing time. It gives the opportunity for visitors to park vehicles that are considered oversized, use the resources within the city, and then it, by midnight, these vehicles would have, would have a two-hour parking window, would have to move. And in addition to this, to prevent someone from gaming the system and moving the vehicle just a couple inches, we've specified that an oversized vehicle has to be moved at least one thousand feet from its current location after two hours. In addition, staff also recommends to be included in the ordinance that there be a parking permit program for residents who have oversized vehicles, who wanna use them for some sort of vacation activity or someone's visiting. But what happened is we'd give them the opportunity to park that vehicle on a city street for seventy-two hours so that they could, like as I mentioned, prepare for a trip or unpack from a trip. In addition, the ordinance also discusses enforcement as well. And the enforcement is looked at in two aspects. One aspect is how do you enforce the vehicle itself being parked, either a commercial vehicle that's being parked on the side of the highway, that's not part of a local delivery or a construction site? And that's something that would be handled by our sheriff's department or volunteers on patrol. And then the other aspect of the enforcement would be related to abuses of the parking permit program for residents. And that would be handled through a code amendment to chapter one, the administrative citation procedure. So if staff, if the city were to be made aware of someone who is abusing a parking permit, we would use that enforcement remedy and not the sheriffs. This graphic here shows what qualifies as an oversized vehicle. And this definition would apply to trailers, which fit something these dimensions or larger. This definition would also apply to both commercial and non-commercial. If, when one looks at the definition, what the definition does specifically is it exempts a vehicle that could be purchased at a regular car dealership, not a commercial dealership. If you went to a dealership, from the research staff did, the largest vehicle you could purchase essentially is a Ford F-350 Super Duty duly, dual rear wheels. That vehicle is just shy of the definition. So if you were to go to a dealership, purchase the biggest consumer vehicle, you would not fit the oversized vehicle definition. What you could do to that pickup truck to make it now qualify for the definition would be to add a camper shell. A standard shell that someone puts on the side of their vehicle, once again, would not fit the oversized vehicle definition. But once you put a camper shell, something that overhangs the sides of the bed or is taller than the cab of the truck by not just a couple inches, sometimes typical camper shell or bed shells are within about six inches higher than the cab. But if we're talking something that is a couple of feet higher than the cab, that type of addition to your truck would then make it an oversized vehicle. But we made this ordinance specific so that it wouldn't catch a van, minivan, SUV, pickup truck or a car. As I mentioned, there'd be exemptions for commercial vehicles. Once again, it's local deliveries and vehicles that are participating in construction. For non-commercial vehicles, this would be a privately owned vehicle. These are the specifics to it that are contained in the proposed ordinance. And as I mentioned, we would incorporate for enforcement, like all other parking requirements in the city would be done by the volunteers on patrol and the sheriff's department. And then we proposed the amendment to chapter one to address violations within the permits. If approved and the, as council would like this implemented, you all received a copy of the letter from the California Coastal Commission. And what their recommendation and comment is that we per, we process the local coastal program amendment. And that amendment would help us with the obtaining of a coastal development permit for the posting of the signs. So to move forward with this, if directed, staff would prepare the LCP amendment and then also work on the coastal development permit for the posting of signage in the city that indicates to people that oversized vehicles would be prohibited from parking overnight for more than two hours if they are non-commercial. Or if they are commercial, then they are not permitted to park within the city unless they are part of a local delivery or active building permit. Staff's recommendation is the adoption of ordinance four twenty-seven and to direct staff to process the local coastal program amendment as well as direct staff to process a coastal development permit for the implementation of the sign posting. I'm available for any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Do we already have an ordinance that, about just unhitched trailers? Somebody had written in about that and I wasn't sure.
I believe that, um, the California Vehicle Code says that you cannot have a, an unhitched trailer on the street. Now, that's in the California Vehicle Code.
You can, because I got a ticket for one that parked in front of my house about ten years ago. You're not allowed to do that.
That's correct.
Correct, when you press your microphone, you can be heard.
Yes, you are correct, everyone is correct on the unattached vehicles. They essentially qualify as an inoperable vehicle and an inoperable vehicle is not permitted to be parked on the streets.
I have a question or an observation. In reading this, it sounds like you've already sort of, uh, worked ahead with the coastal commission on, um, the appropriate nuances that make it acceptable to them, like that two-hour thing, you know, accommodating the grunion runners and scuba divers and all that stuff.
Yes, you are correct. What you observed is what staff gained from when we were processing earlier this year, the overnight parking limitation in the Malibu Pier area, Surf Rider area. The, the comments that staff received from the coastal commission were centered around providing at least a two-hour window between midnight and five AM. And that's why we recommended what we did. It was consistent with the feedback we received from them.
So you have a relatively high, um, comfort level that this, as it's written, would be acceptable to them? They wouldn't be kicking it back to us for any reason?
What we need to do, it, we did address the, the hour hurdle that was in their previous, uh, comment letter to us. But the next step that they would like to see us address would be the local coastal program amendment so that we could make this consistent with the city's LCP.
Okay, thanks.
I have one quick question. Will this supersede the other ordinance that is in front of the coastal commission on appeal now?
That was a coastal development permit as opposed to an ordinance, so it only affected that one area where the signs were proposed. That's actually scheduled to be considered by the coastal commission on appeal in December. So we are gonna be coordinating with the coastal commission to determine whether to try to pursue that further and defend the, the city's approval of the application or whether to just go with the, this ordinance and LCPMM approach, which I think is probably more likely to be successful.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Do you have any public comment?
Oh, sorry, yeah, Sean. Go ahead, public comment, yeah, yeah. My bad, I...
Well, thank you, everybody, for letting me speak again. Of course, I like to try and get along with everybody, but for somehow I still find myself in this position. So I guess I'll have to state on the record that I don't want public access taken away for something that may be construtive of my, a trailer being parked on the highway that's actually for the public. So I'm kinda caught in the middle of this. So what I'd like to propose, one of the reasons why I'm coming here tonight, is I'd like to sit down with each one of you council members, as well as Frida and Bonnie, to come up with the final conclusion of how the, how I can make the city happy in order to also still provide beachgoers, kayaks and paddleboards in a safe and a convenient manner. So I'm willing to say, state on record that I'd like to come down and talk to each one of you guys to sit down and find a final conclusion. Because my goal here is not to go against the city, it's to go along with the city. I'm a, I'm a big part of the city and everybody that knows me independently and so forth. That's my, that's my goal. This is all new to me. I'm just coming up in here, going through all these guidelines and these ordinances. So I'm just trying to figure it out, how can I protect the rights of the beachgoers as well as serve them as I've been doing for over twenty years? So that's where I'm at today. So with that being said, the second thing that I wanted to talk about really quickly, am I on a time eater? Oh, I was looking at it up there, okay. So I'll make it quick. So I was thinking of, uh, uh, maybe another alternative. And again, I'm willing to go along with the city council and try to, you know, to make this work for everybody. But also, we were talking about, uh, I, I brought up a matter of yellow zones. There's two yellow zones that are over forty feet in this specific ordinance that was original ordinance that was passed when I came back, the one that I appealed. So on that one, I, and I've talked to Richard and so forth, I don't think we've come up with any conclusion that those are actually legal yellow zones. I don't know if anything's come up with that for Bonnie or Richard, if those are even in fact, they're supposed to even be there. And also red curbing, there's a lot of existing red curbing that's in my specific area. So in a fire hydrant, typically fifteen feet, we've got red zones that are twenty feet in this area, up to thirty, up to sixty feet, that are right in front of the Malibu Pier. So I don't know, maybe that might be another conclusion because I know one of the main reasons for this ordinance, when it initially came up, is to take off Malibu search shack van and trailer, which would open up a couple parking spaces. But just by even giving back some yellow zones and so forth, that's four parking spaces, if not more, right there, as well as existing, uh, red curbing. So I just thought I'd propose that, if that's, you know, a possibility or not. Oh, sorry, I thought I heard a beep. So that, that's basically kinda where I'm at. But I'd like to come up with a final solution. I don't wanna be a problem here. I love the city, I love the people that, you know, that we, obviously the public that comes in. So I'm on both sides of the coin here, so that's basically it.
All right, thank you. I think that it's not, you know, this is not something that's just in, in applicable to the area where your business is. I think this is, uh, something that's an issue that's in, you know, many other, other areas. Jefferson's referencing seven different areas in the city, but I think it's more of a citywide, citywide thing because we have issues with it not immediately necessarily in that area, but elsewhere. Where large vehicles get parked for, for periods of time and, uh, we don't wanna see that happen anymore. So, um, I guess, I don't know if somebody wants to make a motion or... There you go.
The motion is to introduce on first reading an ordinance of the city of Malibu determining the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and adding chapter ten point eighteen to title ten of the Malibu municipal code and modifying section one point, ten point oh four oh of the Malibu municipal code to include chapter ten point eighteen as subject to administrative fines to implement a citywide restriction on parking of oversized vehicles.
Yeah, that.
And I assume to also have the staff process the LCP amendment and the coastal development permits for this.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, appreciate the moment. Before the motion goes forward, um, I just wanted to make sure the city attorney had no issues with myself voting on this in the last one because this is a citywide. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are now at five, six, sorry. Six B, funding options for land acquisition. I mean, like I said, parking meters at various locations citywide. Heather, is there a public comment on this? No? Okay. Public works.
Okay, ready to go? Good evening, Mayor Peak and distinguished members of Malibu City Council. On August eighth, or August twenty-eighth, um, council directed staff to explore the installation of parking meters, uh, in certain areas of Malibu. With that said, we identified eight locations. And I can, I'll go over individually here, uh, from the east to the west side of, of Malibu. First location is Rambla Pacifica, Civico Street. And there's approximately twenty spaces that are, that are front-end, uh, ninety-degree head-in parking that can be metered. Next location would be, uh, Rambla, Rambla Vista Road, where, uh, adjacent to PCH, there's about ten parallel parking spaces there that can be, also be considered to be metered.
And those are not, those ones are not on PCH, if you go back to that? Those are the ones that are kind of in, inside the little park, little street there, right?
That is correct. The next location would be Cross Creek Road. There's, on the west side of Cross Creek Road, there's sixteen spaces that are head-in forty-five degree park, is it thirty? Forty-five degree, uh, head-in parking. And on the east side, there's thirteen spaces there that can be metered. Uh, along Civic Center Way, there's, on the north side, there's, um, sixty spaces there that are also, uh, parallel parking and, uh, head-in park, or, yeah, head-in forty-five degree parking. On the south side of, of Civic Center Way, there's seventy-four spaces that are also, uh, head-in parking. Uh, next location would be Malibu Road. This one we just striped and we actually gained, I think it was fourteen brand-new spaces, but we've got twenty-four, uh, twenty-one parallel parking spaces that can be metered on the north side of Malibu Road. And then another forty on the, on the south side. And those, uh, on the south side are, are forty-five degree head-in parking. Next location would be Heather Cliff. Now, there's, there's not too many parking spaces here. There's only three here that we've identified next to the, um, shopping center there. However, in the blue there, that's a loading zone. It's in the area, I guess, of the, uh, the post office. There, there's five spaces there now. We've noticed that people park there and then just basically leave their car there. And, uh, so that could be metered also, uh, if, if council chooses to do so. Seventh location would be on Cliffside Drive next to the, it'd be at the state park there. There's nine spaces that are parallel park. And the last location would be, uh, Westford Beach, which we have, uh, on the landslide, there's about seventy-two parallel parking spaces there that can be metered. And then on the, uh, on the ocean side, there's actually, uh, at this time, there's, uh, I believe it's seventy parallel parking spaces. But right now, we're in the middle of redesigning that for angled parking to, uh, bring it up to a hundred and three spaces, uh, of total parking spaces there. And thirty-three of those spaces would be actually, uh, brand-new parking spaces also. So anyway, in, in general, the equipment that we'd use would be single-space parking meters or, or multi-space pay stations, whatever, whatever would apply to the, to the, to the location. Enforcement's would be, enforcement would be by VOP or by sheriff or basically any peace officer. Permits, we'd have to acquire a CDP, but that's appealable because we're in the coastal zone. We'd also have to get a city ordinance because, uh, for the parking fee. And then the cost and revenues, that would be determined, uh, in the future because we don't, at this time, we don't know how many parking spaces that you'd like metered. Next steps would be, if council choose to move forward with this, is to, uh, staff would bring back an implementation plan, which shows actual locations, types of meters that'd be installed, the actual costs and revenues that'd be associated with that. And, uh, we'd get into permits and, and, and ordinances and such. So, um, if you have any questions, we could, Arthur? if you have any questions, we could, Arthur and I would be here to answer.
I think that my first question just regards to the areas that are closest to the beaches is how is the, you know, I, I drive through Santa Monica and other cities that are close to the beach and that parking is metered, as is, I think Manhattan Beach and other, you know, beach city communities. Um, how is coastal going to react to us taking what is now free beach parking and making that metered parking?
Well, again, it's, uh, it's appealable. We're in the coastal zone, so it is appealable. But there, there are cities, like you said, that do have parking meters and, uh, along, you know, PCH. So, uh, we would probably inquire with those cities. We've, we've actually inquired with Caltrans and they have no problem, you know, metering PCH if, uh, you know, if we requested that. But, um, anyway, that's.
But we're not talking about PCH. We're just talking about.
Just talking about city-owned streets at this time.
Right. So basically, if you're talking about Westward Beach, which is the only really significant one, and the one in Civic Center Way, basically, the only thing we're talking about is charging people to go to the beach and charging people to go to the park. So I'm trying to figure out why we actually need to do this. Yeah? I mean, I did, it's, uh, I'm, I'm, I don't imagine that the revenue is going to be so substantial that, uh, you know, we're going to really need to do this. On Cross Creek, those 13 spaces we have on one side of the street and a dozen, we're all, we have three hour parking there now that's enforced by the VOPs and sheriff, right? So basically, the only difference is somebody putting quarters in, uh, essentially. So I'm trying to figure out why we're really doing this.
Mayor, I just wanted to answer your question about the coastal commission. And I did speak with the coastal commission staff about this, um, just kind of a general conversation and, and indicated that, you know, we are the only coastal city that doesn't have parking meters, um, which they acknowledged and, um, you know, preliminarily said that they wouldn't have, um, a lot of issues with us installing parking meters if some of that revenue could be used to offset the cost that the city spends on, um, maintaining and patrolling the beaches and providing public safety for beach visitors. I think they understand that that's a har, a big cost for the city.
A hardship on the city. So currently, we're already taking our dollars out of our general fund and putting them into things like the beach team and things like that to pay for that. So this would offset some of those costs. And coastal's asking for us to make a commitment, if we were to do that, that, that those costs would be used to offset those costs. Is that correct?
They haven't asked us directly for that, but it was implied that that could be helpful if we, um, committed some of the funds towards, um, the costs that go towards the beach and public safety for the beach.
I thought we were almost at even with the beach and the money that we get from the parking lot.
Um, no. When we first started, um, the beach team, um, the agreement that we had with the county, uh, was that we would take over the costs of the beach team for the sheriffs. And that would be offset by the parking tax revenue, um, that comes in through the county beach lots. And they provided us with that revenue and also with citations issued by the beach team. Um, what has happened, um, over the last, I believe, 15 or 16 years that we've been, um, running the beach team, is that those costs have escalated each year with the increase in cost for the sheriff and the liability trust fund, um, costs that get applied to the sheriff. But the parking lot revenue has remained fairly steady. So in fact, at this point, we are no longer even, um, though we were in the past.
I think that's to the tune of a couple hundred thousand dollars, like $280,000 we're out of pocket on that one.
Correct. And then what we've seen especially this last summer is that with the increase in visitors to the beaches that aren't just county-owned beaches, we're sending our resources to state-owned beaches and to beaches that have access ways provided by other agencies that don't patrol them, but due to the fact that they're in the city and that they cause, um, you know, a problem with our residents, we're, um, sending our resources there. And so, um, at some point, we're going to have to actually increase the number of, um, of deputies that we have on the beach team to be able to keep up with the need.
Basically, it's still mostly our residents. They're going to be paying for these parking meters anyway. It's not just tourists.
I, I couldn't answer that because I don't know where we're planning on putting meters. You know, we could certainly, um, explore it further, but I, I think, you know, the council did ask us to bring an item back. So this is, um, you know, just for consideration and further direction.
You know, talked about the need for these and, um, I'm, there's a part of me that's like, this is, this is urbanization. But, um, I went to my dentist and he says, hey, what the heck? Can you do, you know, my customers have no place to park in front of the building because people park there all day long. And there's no turnover. So is there something that can be done? And I, I don't know what, if, where the three hour thing, where that's enforced. But in that particular place, he was interested in getting some sort of turnover thing. And I don't know, you had one of those places like Malibu Divers area, you know, down there in front of the post office and stuff. I don't know, maybe those people, maybe it would work for them. I don't know if they have people just park there all day long with the beach. But I think some of the, um, rationale or, uh, reason for this is not necessarily revenue generating on its own, but to kind of encourage a little turnover in some of the places so they don't get people just parking all day long and nobody else getting to get in there, I think.
Also, you know, along, just in, in referencing the area that you're talking about right now in, in Cross Creek, the building, for example, where the dentist is, is under, underparked, right? And so is each of the shopping centers that are there, to the tune where they tell the employees to go and park in the free public street parking. And I don't think that the city was necessarily in the business of making all the parking on the street to provide for the increase in business of the commercial property owners. So, um, I think that I would explore looking at, at, at those kinds of areas, you know, as well as the beach, because I think that if you were to, for example, look at, uh, put metered parking on Zuma Beach, you would be able to, to pave over the rest of the dirt and provide safer parking for the public. And there would be a higher turnover in parking if you were to do that, for example, somewhere at Westward Beach Road. Now, to accommodate the people that use that on a regular basis, that go down there and walk every morning, which I know that there's a lot of them, there's no reason to stop us from taking 20 or 30 or X amount of those parking spaces and making those, you know, free parking all the time. But.
Or you just start at 10 a.m.
Yeah, exactly. You could, you could start the, it's, she'd say, it's time. So you'd say metered parking between the hours of, you know, 10 a.m. and 5 p.m. or whatever that, that time period is, I think that could be done in a way that would increase the turnover, which is, is the need for doing it. And is going to generate some revenue to offset a, a handful of the public safety costs, um, related to, to, to visitors in certain areas of the community. Laura?
I have a few things, but one of the things you just said is, people don't go to the beach for three hours on a Saturday. They're going to go for seven hours, you know, especially if they want to be able to.
What I was referencing was people in the morning that walk on the beach and those people do go there for an hour or two hours.
No, no, no. Believe me, I'm one of those people. So I, and that's why I said that you just don't start the, um, the metering till 10 or something, or nine even. Most of the people are gone or 10. If it's a big surf day, it should be 10. But what I mean is that people that are going to be parking during the day at Westward Beach, you don't go to the beach for just three or four hours. You go for six or seven hours, especially when you get a, a good parking spot. But, I mean, it would just mean that they would have to feed the meter a little bit more. And so.
Or use the app where they could add the parking meter through their phone while they're sitting on the beach.
But, Riva, did you want to say?
Oh, I just wanted to say that in some, um, other cities that we've looked at, we have seen parking meters that are four hours or six hours or eight hours. There's even 24 hour parking meters. So there are a lot of options. And with technology today, with apps, you can pay from your phone.
No, I know. Skylar was just saying to help with the turnover. And I was just saying, I don't think that really helps with turnover. So I have a couple of issues.
No, but Laura, if you did one hour parking, you know, in.
At Westward Beach?
Well, you would probably, you probably wouldn't do it, you probably wouldn't do one hour parking for all of the beach, but you may have one section of 10 spaces that's near the bathroom, that's one hour parking or something. Or, you know, like a small section of it, because that will increase turnover.
Um, I, I don't know if I'd be in support of that at the beach, but, um, I guess I have a couple of questions. Um, when I was on, and when Lou and I were both on Public Works Commission, we heard this issue at least twice. I, I mean, I was on the commission for around six years. So this came up a few times. So I just wanted to know, has this gone to the Public Works and the Public Safety Commission?
Several years ago, we went to the Public Works Commission. And they recommended to do the three hour parking instead of parking meters on Cross Creek Road.
Right. Okay. And I know when it came to us in years past, we had recommended not to go ahead with it, because there were a lot of people in Malibu who felt like that it was kind of making Malibu more like all the other beach cities as opposed to kind of the funkier place here. So I, I'm just, we just wanted to know. The other thing is, um, we might consider doing a pilot study in one area. And then third, um, and I know that our commercial areas are supposed to be able to accommodate their employees, but we all know that's not true. We also all know that retail is a challenging field these days. So a lot of people in the, the, um, Civic Center area, their employees do park on Civic Center Way, so that there is more room for employees to park in the parking lots and in those areas. So my concern is that now we say, okay, well, you work at Marmalade and you have to park, you know, by the library. And now you're going to have to walk back there. If we do three hour parking, you're going to have to move back, walk back there three times during your shift. So I don't know if we take some of those spaces and we make them free and some of them not free. Um, and you just kind of, you know, hope that the people that work there get there early. I mean, I too have heard the complaints, Rick, with, gee, my, especially for that one dental office, the, the medical office, that people don't. And, and I think it got really worse during all the construction. And that's really when it's been bad, uh, for the wastewater treatment plant. And that, so it's been bad the last year or so. But, um, I just have concerns about, like up Rambla Pacifica and that area. I mean, who parks there besides residents? Are there people that aren't residents that park there? Are we really looking to get this money from our residents? Or are we trying to get money from visitors to offset some of the extra money that we're paying out because of all the visitors? So I just have some, some concerns with some of these areas, other areas. Like I would be okay on Westward Beach Road, um, because I think that, that, that's mainly visitors coming down there at that point and, um, it's, you know, doing it after like 10 a.m. 10 a.m. to 6 p.m., something like that, or 5 p.m.
Just for clarification, we just gave you a list of the streets that are options. There weren't anything other than just a list for you to consider.
I know, I know. Thank you.
When I was in North Carolina, I, uh, went to the trade show floor and I happened to see a parking meter guy. And, uh, I, I hit him, hit him up for a conversation because I knew this was on the agenda. And, uh, he said, you know, oh, it's all high tech now and there's all sorts of different options. And, uh, if you want it to have a trial period, it, you know, you can do that or you can do group meters, blah, 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 blah. So it kind of got me thinking that, um, on this subject, if we're to pursue, move forward on it at all, um, probably maybe it would be a good idea to just do a little pee-wee trial area, you know, and see how it goes. And maybe rather than, you know, we, the cool thing about parking meters is you can just do them one at a time or two or three at a time. You don't have to like do open heart surgery and put in the wastewater treatment system. Um, you know, you can see how it goes and then, well, it worked here, let's do it over there. Or that didn't work here, let's, let's go back to the three hour parking thing. Yeah. So, um, that's something to consider. Then in other words, it's not like, oh my God, we're making the decision to totally urbanize ourselves. We could just try a little bite and stick our baby toe in the water and see how it works. It's not that draconian.
Well, that's what I said, that we could do a pilot.
Right. And I, I'm supporting what you said. I'm in full agreement with what you said. Um, in fact, I'm providing veracity to what you said in my consultation with industry professionals. So, um, one question I had, you talked about the three hour parking area. What is that area right now, if you know what I'm asking? What, what areas is limited to three hour? Is it the entire of Cross Creek? The whole, the whole?
It's on Cross Creek between, uh, PCH and Civic Center Way.
It's not on Civic Center Way, though.
Yeah. So it's not on Civic Center Way.
I think, Arthur, the, the, the area of more concern is the Civic Center Way area, not so much the Cross Creek Road area. Um, but, but I do think that the Cross Creek Road area is definitely helpful, because before those spots were tied up with the same car in there the whole day, and now there's a little bit of turnover. I think that the area that you're talking about should actually probably be reduced to even a, a lower time amount of. Well, metered parking would allow, would probably even provide more turnover than that, because people wouldn't, people either aren't going to park, they're going to park in the lot and that spot's available. If someone wants to come for three hours, they can put their time in the machine or they can put less time in the machine. So I'm going to suggest that we bring something back. Um, do you guys want to look at, to give staff, um, some like parameters in terms of like what areas we should try to test some of this stuff out? Or do you not want to do, like, what would be the, I, I think that the Civic Center area would be a good idea. And I would think that Westward Beach would be a good idea, but that may be an area that would take a much longer to get approved as opposed to trying it out in the Civic Center.
But in the Civic Center, if you're really talking just about turnover, we could do three hour parking there and see how that works. And then if it works, then we can put meters in and people will pay for it. But at least we'll see if there's actually a turnover as a result of it.
We don't want to do Westward yet because we're going to be putting in.
No, I agree. That's all we're talking about Civic Center Way.
So Civic Center Way actually, the, again, my only concern is that employees do park there for eight hours, so that it does open up parking at the parking lot, so that we can actually help support our local businesses, so that there are parking spots available. So I don't know if we.
Maybe we take the side on Legacy Park and then leave the other side unrestricted.
So we could try to do that. That's what I was saying before, that maybe we take certain areas and leave some of the free parking. And also, I would recommend, though, I guess this kind of goes against what we're looking at for the weekends, but because people go there for the farmer's market and that is mainly locals, that we maybe want to say it, there are no meters. I mean, you know, you can park all day on Sunday or something like that to help not have to put an additional burden that people have to pay for parking. I don't know. It's a thought.
Or maybe you just do it on, like, what are the hours? It's like 10 to 3 or some, 10 to 2? So no metered parking during those hours on Sunday. Give them Sunday.
I mean, a lot of places with meters.
Our challenge on Sunday becomes, you know, summertime when the city's packed. So you probably want a, a, a time limitation on Sunday.
And the other thing you have to consider.
Rest assured, if you open it up on Sunday at that time, then all the vendors are just going to go and park their cars there and not move them.
And the other thing you need to, just keep in the back of your minds, I mean, the bottom line is if we're talking about employees, you know, somebody working in a retail store or a waiter at one of those restaurants, and if it's costing a dollar an hour for argument's sake, so it's eight bucks a day that they're paying five days a week. So that cuts their salary by 40 bucks, you know? So that's something else I think we're.
The idea with this is to have, if you do a pilot style in the Civic Center Way area, do, if you want to start with time limited parking, we can do that. So maybe the, the staff should start with three hour parking on the ocean side of Civic Center Way at this time, the area in front of Legacy Park, the medical building and, uh, the country mark property. You want to pull up the slide for that?
There's 74 on the, um, Legacy Park side and 60 on the county side. So, um, I, I, if we're going to do something, I would just start with one side and not the other.
Another location to consider too might be the Malibu Road, where we added the spaces.
That's what I was going to say.
Would imagine there are less employees parking there, but that's just another idea.
I just want to throw something in real quick here. It's, it's hard for the sheriffs or the VOPs. They're going to have to chalk each car, find some mechanism for them. So when the three hours start, otherwise, how are you going to do it, these people?
Well, that's the reason to do the parking meters.
Right. That's why I'm supporting the meters in those general areas. You know, the last question I had was if we could have staff look at those several spots that Commissioner Mazza identified that are on private property up Rambla. If they could, I'd make sure that there's a determination on those properties. There's a couple up, uh, Rambla.
Well, what, I mean, is there any objection to starting with a pilot of parking meters on Civic Center Way? Well, what, I mean, is there any objection to starting with a pilot of parking meters on Civic Center Way? For a portion of the parking spots, and we see how that works? We get staff to come back and say, this is what we think it's going to cost to put them in? You know, if you do 25 of them, this is what we think it is. If you do 100, it's, you know, maybe going to drop your cost 5% per location or whatever it is?
What about Cross Creek? Where we already have the three hours.
Sorry, I should be clear when I say that. When I say that, I'm referring to Cross Creek Road and Civic Center Way, which is up on the board, but Cross Creek Road is not highlighted.
Well, can we, while we're requesting them to come back with a proposal for that, can we now implement the three-hour parking thing to extend all the way along Cross Creek? Or at least half of the street? Like, you want to do that and see if that works, and we can save ourselves some money?
I think we should try that. I mean, the sheriffs and VOP are still doing the three-hour, three-hour stuff on Cross Creek Road just to extend it down on one side of Civic Center Way. We could do that.
Why? What do we get out of that, then?
Then you'll find out if actually people do move. If you actually do get more spaces available more often, there or not. That's why we're doing parking meters.
I would argue that if you put in metered parking, you're going to create less people parking in those areas and more availability, fewer people parking in those areas. You have more vacant spaces than if you say, we're going to keep three-hour, we're going to increase the amount of three-hour parking spaces and they're going to be free. I mean, that's what data would have to show you, that I'm seeing people in the audience shaking their head. I don't know how you would have, if you were to go, if you, okay. If you go into Santa Monica right now and there's one side of the street that has metered parking and one side of the street that has two-hour parking, the two-hour side is full and there's vacancy on the metered side. So if you want to create more vacancy, you put in the parking meters. You get a little bit of revenue to offset the cost of doing that, and you see if it works. And if it works, then people can find parking and there's more turnover. I don't think someone that's going to the dentist or someone that's going to lunch that's got to put, you know, a dollar if they're going to know, you know, they're happy to pay for that convenience of knowing that they have the parking spot versus driving down to the end of Legacy Park and looking for a spot.
Do you know how much parking is per hour in Santa Monica?
Depends what street.
No, it's all $2 an hour.
Okay, well, $2 an hour, there you go.
So if you put, you know, it's, they make a lot of revenue from it. So if you're going to put in parking meters, at least make some money. Don't make it, you know, 50 cents an hour.
Well, I was thinking 100 bucks an hour. We've got some expense. I'm joking.
Well, this is Malibu, right? You know, your quote will now be taken out of context. And the mayor wants $100 an hour on, and I just want for the record that I did not support that.
By 11 o'clock tonight, it will be on CBS.
Let me be very clear in correcting that I was providing a little bit of humor at the 9:20 hour on a Monday evening post-Thanksgiving trip to Fan Coma still in place.
I agree with your trial program. But what I'm saying is they're going to come back with a proposal, figure out what meters, who, you know, sent out a request for a proposal, et cetera. Can we do the three-hour thing on one side of the street now and see if that works?
Okay, so why don't we, how about if we take the spots that are, in the meantime, we take the parking by the Malibu Country Mart, by the medical building on both sides of the street, which is basically the area from, between the library and Cross Creek Road on Civic Center Way, and just make that all three-hour parking? In the interim...
So that's like from the NAP building in front of Taverna Tony?
Are you talking about both sides?
Both sides.
Okay.
Just make that three-hour parking because that's the area where there's more people that need to go in and out.
Yeah, and the rest of it's still free.
Between now and then... Right in front of the library.
So are we talking about from here?
Yes.
So the entrance to Legacy Park, that first entrance here?
Correct.
That everything to the west of there, both sides, would still be unlimited?
Yeah, correct. Right where the pedestrian cross rock is, right there? I'm directing staff to come back with an item to do that. And I'm directing staff to come back with an item to show metered...
Do we want the individual meter?
Right now, that's three-hour parking. So three-hour parking meaning parking signs that say three hours, right? Because I, but Rick, I want you to, no, no, we're, two elements to this. The amount of time it's going to take us to make that no parking on the street there is probably the amount of time it's going to take us to get to a point where we could put parking meters in.
I don't, that's not true, is it?
Signs have got to be a lot less expensive than a parking meter.
The signs are a lot less expensive, but that's going to take some time to do that, is it not? Or is it merely bring back an item, we're going to re, put up signs and that's it? My question is sort of the timeline.
We haven't had one in 25 years, and, you know, are we in a hurry now?
I'm not talking about parking meters right now. I'm talking about no parking signs in that area. So there's a, Laura, there's a difference. So Rick asked that, in the interim, until we get parking meters, that we make that three-hour parking. The area that I just referenced, right? Do you follow me?
Yes, I follow you.
I'm asking you, I'm asking Laura.
May I jump in? Putting up the signs, it won't take much time. It's, we just have to check with the planning department, see if we need to get a coastal development permit to put up the signs. So the process of getting approvals takes longer than actually putting up the signs.
Would you have the same issue with parking meters?
By the time, yes, we would have the same issue with parking meters. But does it make sense to go and waste the staff time on getting parking signs and simultaneously go into the same area and trying to get parking meters?
I now see what you're talking about.
So, but tonight's agenda only described picking out various locations citywide for parking meters. So anything that you else want is going to have to come back anyway. So I think we're at the point where you've thrown out a lot of ideas. Maybe what you need is staff to come back with a plan that includes those components.
So I think what we're looking at is Cross Creek Road and looking at the areas that are now currently three-hour parking, looking at putting meters in there. And then looking at the ocean side of Civic Center Way and putting in parking meters there. So I think that those were the two that we wanted to start with, is what I was hearing.
Okay, that's talking about parking meters. The no, if we want to talk about no parking signs, we need to bring that back as a separate item at a separate meeting.
And we also...
So if we want to do that, Rick?
And we need a CDP for that. So it's not just, we want to put up parking meters.
We would have to then direct staff to go and get a CDP for that.
And also, in order...
We need a parking, we need a CDP for either.
In order to collect the fee, also. Collect parking fee.
The timeline for the parking meters is longer. The timeline for no parking signs, which is a separate thing, we can bring back and discuss. So if we want to have staff do that, we can. But know that it's not as simple as putting it on the next agenda, having a meeting, and sticking up the signs the following month. We're going to have to go through the, getting a CDP and dealing with planning on that.
So what your suggestion is, let's just do one of those and not both of those?
Correct.
Okay, so if I'm, I agree. And maybe what we should do is do a synergy of those two things. And since this area is the kind of area that seems to require more turnover, rather than doing it the south side of Civic Center Way...
That area is the area that's in front of the medical building and the Country Mart on Civic Center Way.
Yeah, and you talked about doing both sides of the street there and then having the rest of it stay free. Maybe we should have that be the little trial area along with Cross Creek and, you know, see how that works.
And the next thing that we have on the agenda is an update on this construction. So right now, you really couldn't do any of this stuff because there's metal plates throughout this entire street.
Well, I think that you could stick posts in the ground, but you probably want that to be more comprehensive in terms of when, knowing that this road is going to get redone in six months from now, that, and knowing that putting the parking meters in is probably going to take longer than six months to do. So having those things, you know, kind of in sync, hey, you know, we're working towards putting parking meters here as we're redoing the road would probably be the most mindful way to go about it. So with that, I just want to be a little bit clear. We don't have to give specific direction as to what exact sides of the street and everything we want parking meters, but we can ask for an item to come back, they can look at them, and we can decide that at that point.
Could we have the revenue also that we think might be generated from it compared to the cost of the parking meters?
Absolutely.
So, and to, just so that everybody knows, we would have sort of an item that will come back. We're going to be a little bit more specific with the area and the streets. And then within that is an item that dictate the cost of the parking, the time of the parking, et cetera. And if you could also maybe lay out a little bit of a timeline, like, this is how long we would think it would take to get this approved, if it's approved. I think that that would be helpful as well.
Okay, sounds very good.
To be clear, though, you just want us to come back with information on the Cross Creek and Civic Center areas, correct?
For now, yeah.
For now. Okay, just wanted to make sure.
And I appreciate staff bringing, you know, all these different areas and whatnot. But I do think that Coastal would have probably a little bit more objection to how we go with the areas that are closer to direct beach access. So we can cross that bridge at a separate time.
I'm sure we can, we can find Amicus briefs through Christie because she's done so many coastal cities.
All right, so you guys, we're good on this? We have enough direction?
If you can just clarify, is it all of Civic Center Way or just from...
So we're going to specify exactly what that is at the next meeting when you bring it back.
Okay.
But we're going to be looking at Civic Center Way and Cross Creek Road.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, and we'll be looking at parking meters, we're going to be looking at times, cost.
Absolutely.
Timeline. Permitting requirements, et cetera.
Do we want to also look at that area on Malibu Road?
Yeah, let's look at, look at the area on Malibu Road, too.
Right, that we just put the extra places, spaces in. Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Civic Center Wastewater Treatment Facility update.
Okay.
We're going to start with an update from Bob Brager on Phase One of the project, and then I'll go through the other part.
Good evening, Mayor Peak and distinguished members of the Malibu City Council. We're going to do an update of the wastewater, our wastewater treatment facility. As you know, a year ago, we issued three contracts to construct a Civic Center Wastewater Treatment Project. It included the treatment, a contract for the treatment, treatment plant, pipelines and pump stations, and injection wells. Last, we issued a notice to proceed to the contractors, all three contractors, on July 2016. And this is for the treatment plant, this is kind of the way it looked. It was kind of bare, streets were still, and they weren't, they weren't open up or anything. And 17 months later, this is what we have at the treatment plant now. Now we have a lot of facilities, and it's kind of hard to see. But most of the equipment, the piping, electrical, they're all basically underground. And, but we still have a lot of facilities here that is necessary for the, for the treatment process to actually work. And what I did was I created a flow diagram because it's kind of hard to see how the sewage is treated. First, it starts off with, from the collection system into, and then it runs into the treatment plant to the inflow pump station. From there, it goes to the headworks facility, which removes the inorganic materials in the sewage, which is basically bone or sand and things like that. From there, it goes to the equalization basin where it gets stored. And then it gets metered towards the biological reactor, which at that point, it gets processed by microbes and which processed organic material. From there, it goes to the membrane facility, which basically is just a filter, a filter process, which separates it between organic solids and clear water. The organic solids gets piped over to the solids thickener, which we reduce, there they reduce the water content, and then the material gets hauled away. Second portion of that, it gets, it goes to the UV disinfection facility, which basically, by the time it gets there, it's pretty, the water is pretty clear. And it just gets tertiary treated by UV disinfection. And then from there, it goes to the recycled water pumping station. And there's a holding tank there, which then, on demand, it will pump to the, to the actual recycled water system, which then gets distributed to each homeowner. Here's another slide that basically shows a different angle of the treatment plant. Again, there are facilities above ground. However, most of it, I would say, like, some are like 70% of everything is actually below ground. So you can't see it there. Now, you notice here, we don't have the landscape, but once that comes in, this will all be sort of hidden. So you won't be able to see that. The next contract we had was the pipelines and pump station. We had about 2.7 miles of pipeline. Contractor has installed that. The last portion is on the north side of Cross Creek Road. And they should, contractor should be done with that in about two to three weeks. So other than that, all the piping is in. The contractor is also responsible to install the pump stations at Bluffs Park, which they're pretty much done there, at Legacy Park. They've got about, oh, about 85% of that. We're still waiting for some electrical equipment at that site there. But they should have that in time to do, do the actual testing of the, of the plant. The next contract was our injection wells. The contractor there started, I believe it was last January, and completed his work testing the injection wells, drilling and testing the injection wells last July. And so now that he's done, the actual, pipeline contractor comes in now and he finishes this off. He actually puts in all the header piping, all the electrical, the, what is it? Submersible pumps for the, for the injection purposes and such, and flushing. So they should be done with this probably in another month or two. Basically, the bottom line is that additional updates. Last October in 2016, staff met with property owners to give them the update of the project. A month later, in November, we met with all the property owners and to confirm the sewer tie-in locations. In January of 2017 of this year, council approved sewer connection ordinance. They also acquired a treatment plant operator. And in September of this year, we, a council approved a sewer rate study. And then in October last month, they banned, approved the ban of water softeners in the Civic Center area. Now, throughout this whole process, our construction phase, which is 17 months now, we've also done, performed groundwater surface monitoring as required in the, in the permit, the de-water, or the wastewater permit. Generally, the, the project schedule is from November 2016 to, no, currently, we've met with property owners. We've confirmed sewer tie-in locations, that was a big thing. And next month, we're going to be starting up the plant, just like we said. Now, 18 months, basically, to start up a plant from scratch, from actually zero, is actually, is unbelievable. One thing about this is that we've, we've basically held the contractor to the, you know, to keep moving and doing everything we can to keep everything on track. And in February, we're going to, so we're going to be starting up next month, clearwater testing of the plant. In February, we're going to confirm that all the tie-ins on the private side and the public side are all in. And then we're going to start accepting flows, you know, from the property owners. And basically, the bottom, bottom line on this project here is that we're on schedule and we're on budget. So, and it's amazing that we've actually got that far.
That's a Bob Brager project.
When, when are you guys going to do all the repaving of the streets?
Rob, you want to, you want to comment on that? Actually, Rob here, he has done an amazing, he's actually overseeing the construction. Although we have a construction manager, Rob, you have to have someone to oversee them.
The man that really holds their feet to the thigh.
Rob has done an excellent job, and so I absolutely couldn't do anything without, without Rob, so, Rob.
So right now, we're anticipating probably sometime after the first year. We're still trying to find a good time. I think there's a couple more paving, or... I think there's a couple more pave, or pipeline trench works that they're gonna be doing. And so sometime beginning of the first of the year, they're gonna have to do some more testing of the pipeline, make sure it's, everything's perfect, and then they'll get going and doing that soon.
Thank you.
I got a question. All the hookups, are they already in place to, to the actual properties? I mean, those big pipes already have the hookups to the actual properties?
We've got the laterals from the main line to the property line. We're waiting now for property owners to hook up.
Okay, great, thank you.
Up to the, to the, to the laterals.
That'll be happening over the next four months.
That's correct.
And we think that the only way it could have been done in eighteen months is with you and Rob and Arthur and the leadership of Ms. Feldman.
Absolutely, she's.
So thank you all, really, for doing a terrific job.
All right, thank you for that update, we really appreciate it.
Can I give the other part of the report? Are we also considering looking at the additional properties?
There's another part to this report.
Yeah, there's a big part to that report.
I'd also like to echo my thanks to the Public Works Department, they've done a terrific job overseeing this project and keeping it moving along, so I'm very proud of the work that we've done. And we are on schedule to meet the deadlines that have been imposed by the Regional Board. Recently, we've been approached by the County of Los Angeles, who currently operates and maintains a wastewater treatment plant that serves both the Pepperdine University campus and the Malibu Country Estates properties. And they are mandated by the Regional Board to update that plant, and they're conducting a feasibility study to look at all the different options to treat that wastewater. And they've asked if they could consider connecting to the city's plant as part of Phase Two in that feasibility study. So the item that we brought forward tonight would be just to agree for them, agree that they could consider connecting to our plant in their study. At the same time, we've also been approached by Hughes Research Laboratory, which is in Phase Three of the prohibition area, and they've asked if they could be considered to be included in Phase Two of the project. And the staff has looked at both of these possibilities, and we do have the capacity to include the expanded area and to move HRL from Phase Three into Phase Two. So at this point, we would just be asking for council's consideration to consider the feasibility study for the county and to move HRL from Phase Three to Phase Two. So those would be the actions that you would be taking tonight. If the county did determine that this was an option, that would be something we would come back to the council with for further discussion.
Could you give me a sense of, if, if we did allow Pepperdine and, and HRL to go in Phase Two, I, I know that it's an assessment district that would be formed, and everybody in Phase Two would be voting on that, right?
That's correct.
So would they then kind of become the biggest?
Is that a weighted vote?
That's what I was just about to ask. So would they become like the biggest, you know, gorilla in the room when it came to? I, I just don't want to disenfranchise all of the homeowners that all of a sudden, they would be like ten percent of the, of the assessment district, so whatever they vote really doesn't matter anyway, and all of a sudden Pepperdine is the big.
Pepperdine, due to the, or the area that we're discussing, would have a large say of the vote in an assessment district if we were to form one assessment district that covered all of Phase Two. Staff has internally discussed possibly doing multiple assessment districts, but as of this time, we don't have that information.
So all we're giving permission now is for them to consider it, we're not actually giving, definitely deciding that they could join it?
That's correct, and, and the feasibility study would show whether it's the most affordable way for them to move forward with upgrading their plant. It may show that it's not the best way to do it, it's just one of the considerations they would look at.
Thank you.
The same, I gather, would go for HRL as well, well.
Well, HRL's just not gonna be quite the behemoth in the, in the, the assessment district that obviously Pepperdine would be.
But it would add to Phase Two, it would add a property that has a much larger percentage than a regular single-family home. And I think that that's what the, you know, yeah, the advantage is that they would bring more money to that phase, but some homeowner, homeowners may not like that.
But it would also probably reduce the costs, as you mentioned here, to the other homeowners, so there's a positive and a negative.
A pro and con.
Right, I mean, there's, there's a couple other benefits, which I did mention in the staff report, one from an environmental perspective. Currently, the emergency discharge procedures for the, for the plant are to discharge into Marie Canyon, and so it would eliminate that as anything that could happen.
It would be better for the environment.
It would, and that the county has also expressed willingness to provide some funding for the design of Phase Two and the development of the assessment district, which we are currently having some trouble obtaining that funding through grants. So it would provide a mechanism for the city to move forward with Phase Two.
And there's not really a, I jokingly said like a Phase One A and a Phase One B, but there's not really a way to, to put them into a, another aspect of the, yeah, a Phase One C.
It's possible, it, it may not be more advantageous, though, for everybody.
Well, I don't think it would be more advantageous to the homeowners necessarily unless HRL were to burden the cost of paying the entire pipeline up the hill that would somehow benefit those of the Malibu Knowles, but I don't see how that would work. Phase Three? Okay, yeah, sorry. Well, I, I think that it's, that I think that staff should look at incorporating them into there. My, my concern is just looking at however that weighted vote plays out and not wanting to harm, you know, it's not a one-man-one-vote arena at that point.
And this actually wouldn't be staff looking at anything, this is just allowing the county's study, which would, the county is paying for the cost of the feasibility study, the city actually wouldn't be doing the study, they would be conducting the study, paying for the study, getting the results, and then sharing them with us. So we actually aren't on the hook for doing anything.
And how does the Regional Board feel about all this?
I've spoken with the Regional Board, the executive director, and he's spoken with his board on this, and at this point, they're perfectly fine with it, as long as the city has indicated that there's sufficient capacity. They don't feel that this would require any kind of amendment to the current MOU, so it's something that we could handle on the city council level.
That was leading to my question, thank you, Reva, about capacity, because we're now assuming that there may be a feasibility study or a possibility that we were taking product from outside the city, the university, and bringing it into the city and dispersing it in the city. And I don't have a problem with Hughes HRL contributing and being part of the system, but the university is, is the big guy, and that's a lot of treatment, and it's gonna be concentrated, and I don't know the exact capacity of what we're allowed to process and inject, because I thought it was around 500,000 gallons a day. So if somebody could.
Yeah, we actually have the capacity to treat up and disperse up to 600,000 gallons a day, and by adding the HRL and the county Pepperdine plant, that would add about 200,000 gallons to, or an additional 200,000, and it would keep us, right, about 550,000 gallons a day. So we would be under the threshold. As you can recall, during the design of the project, we designed it with extra capacity, knowing that we had a lot of undeveloped properties we needed to account for. So we have spoken with RMC, that was the original plant designer, and they are confident, and Public Works has looked at this, that there's sufficient capacity to take this without causing a problem to our existing system.
Thank you. So then I can assume that the property owners that are still here in Civic Center that have undeveloped properties are going to be limited to 100,000 gallons, that would be the total max of their contribution?
That's, their allocation is already in place, so that would not change their allocation.
So that's at the 1.5 FAR, so if you figure.
Phase One, that's already been accounted for, will not change, and the capacity that is for Phase One is sufficient.
And there's, there's gonna be no increased capacity to that, to those property owners in that phase. If they base their capacity off a .15 FAR with whatever their zoning was, that's what they get. They, some of those properties cannot even go to a .2 FAR because they did not pay for it, and the capacity does not exist.
Got it, so we're, we're 600 max, and we're gonna be at 500?
Roughly. Build out of every property in the prohibition area.
Right, so I would can direct staff to consider, you know, the feasibility of allowing those and let them pay for it.
The, direct staff to allow the county to go ahead with its feasibility study?
Yes. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. I, the next item is a Cultural Arts Commission appointment, and I am just going to wait, I need to put that off actually to the next meeting, because I didn't get confirmation back that my person's gonna be able to be attending all the meetings, so. Seven B, recognition of Ronald Ringe.
I asked to have this put on here because this is the grandson of Frederick and May Ringe, who of course used to own all of Malibu and are a big part of our history. And I was the recipient, as I think all of the council members were, of a book written by Mr. Ringe that was sent to me shortly before he passed away within the last few months, which is one of a number of books that he's written, having to do with the history of Malibu. That one in particular focused on his theory or contention that the Malibu Lagoon area, I guess right around the Adamson houses where Juan Cabrillo maybe made his first landing and met with the Chumash Indians. And I think when I heard he passed away, I thought to myself, you know, this is an important moment, and we who still are in touch with sort of, I wouldn't say the founding fathers, but pretty close to it in many ways, historical figures from Malibu and their relatives, and people who have actually spent some time and energy doing historical work for Malibu, I didn't want his work and his life to go unrecognized. And so I was thinking about, what's the appropriate way to do this? Do we just like, you know, do a plaque and call down his family and say, hey, we really think, you know, thank you for doing, for his contributions to the history of Malibu? And I thought maybe, maybe something better might be, and I have to give credit to Reva because I can't piss this off as my own idea, although I would say it came about during a conversation that she and I had, so I'll take partial credit for it. But she helped me crystallize it, put it that way, is, I want to know what the council thought about maybe directing the Cultural Arts Commission to come up with some sort of work of art. I mean, what I thought in my mind was, you know, the, the supposed and probable landing of Leo Carrillo on Malibu Lagoon with Chumash Indians in their canoes is a pretty epic moment in time, and probably one that should be commemorated, whether it's actual or whether it's imagined, it probably should be commemorated with some type of artwork, whether it be a painting, or a mural, or a sculpture, or something that maybe could be part of a permanent display here in Malibu, maybe right here in City Hall, I don't know. And then we could possibly invite some of the remaining family members down here, and, and that could be an appropriate level of commemoration for the historic work that he's done for Malibu. So I'm just throwing it out there for discussion, rather than just do a little plaque, let's, let's try and punctuate what these historical figures mean to us here before they're gone forever.
Thanks, Rick.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good, good idea to talk to the family a little bit about that before we sort of make whatever that formal decision is, but I think something along those lines would be great. Just on a separate note, when seeing this here and reading the book and his, you know, edits that I've gotten actually ever since I was in office, I think every month I've, or not every month, but every four to six months, I, I received an, an update from him, I wrote back and forth to him with letters. And I did not know of his, his ailing health, and I left a message where I was gonna go and do an interview with him in like September, October, and it never got to happen. So I was a little bit frustrated with that, but at the same time, had just completed a book that he had sent me that his, his father had wrote on Malibu while I was in South America on that trip, and that was, that really, you know, set, set with me. So I think that something along those lines would be awesome. I think the cultural aspect of the Chumash should be a more prominent thing when we tell the history of our city. For example, when you walk into the room over there and we see a bunch of pictures of white guys with beards, we should probably be telling the story of the Chumash and that cultural history in a much greater depth than it's told. So I, that's maybe a separate thing, but I know that that's something that, that I think Ronald would want to be told. And I think that that's an important fact in that history. So I would leave it at that and maybe direct a couple council members to, to reach out to the family and come back here with something after we talked to, I know that maybe his wife or kids.
Yeah, I mean, I think what we should do is.
Or direct the Arts Commission to do that, sorry.
Yeah, to, to come up with something, you know, and maybe bring it to the council for a conceptual item, and, you know, the, leave it wide open to them, and, but it should be, you know, it should be an important thing, an important thing.
So we basically want to change their work plan, but do it like now.
Yeah.
And add that to it, because I think that would be a smart, they have a subcommittee that went and talked to the family.
Right.
I think that's a great way to do it.
And I, I also think that just, it really makes me think of that, that cultural stuff that's out there on the wall, that I think that we could put that onto the Arts Commission, too, to have a little bit of a look at that and reach out to some of the Chumash folks in the community and, and update that story with a few more cultural facts.
Are you talking about the City Hall lower lobby?
I'm talking about that when you come into this building, you probably don't have the biggest inclination that this was a Chumash historical area.
Okay, well, why don't we bring that back separately?
Yeah, bring it back separately, yes, yes.
Because this item has to do with, yes, okay, thank you.
Can I just add something real quick to that? We have a living member that's still on the Adamson House Board, I'm on the board there as well, and I have had many meetings with Ron Ringe up in Cayucus on other historical matters in the city, and he always loved the native tiles by Diana Watson, so possibly we could suggest to the Cultural Arts Commission that one of those tiles, they're not really expensive, but they are ornate and they last a long time, maybe we contact or have them contact somebody for fabrication of a tile. They can make them two feet by two feet, and they last eons, thanks.
All right, so I think that we have, I mean, I don't think anyone's, I would, Jefferson, I would ask you to, to reach out to the, the member that's on that and have them contact the Arts Commission, or have your Arts Commissioner contact that person.
There are two members in Malibu right now that I know firsthand from the board, and I will contact them this week.
Great. All right. Anything else?
Well, I'm thinking of something a little bigger than a tile, though.
He's thinking of a statue.
Well, not a statue, or a mural or something, something a little more substantial, let's think bigger than.
The tile was just a suggestion of one of the things.
So maybe there's a sculpture, or there's a mural, or there's something that's in a park, and then here at City Hall, maybe there's a, a smaller tile.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay. All right, thank you, have a good evening.
You have one more.
What am I missing?
One more school item, that's not in here.
Got it. Petition for unification of a Malibu Unified School District. Laura and Rick. Or Rick.
Why don't you take the lead, Laura?
I just want to make sure everyone can hear me. Thank you. So this is something that, this is kind of a two-parter. One of them is to look at the petition or resolution, and the other part, which I, I think we'll start with, is to consider requesting that the LA County Committee on School District Reorganization postpone the preliminary hearing to discuss the petition from the city, accepting the petition. As we know, they have, they got the petition and they, sorry, I have my notes here. They received it at a meeting on November 1st, but then they have to have another meeting to actually accept the petition because they've never had one from a city before. And so they were planning, because of the holidays, it's been put off, there's really no timeline for that. So they were waiting. I just spoke to their staff today, so they were looking at around the end of January or so to have that meeting. But the school board at the meeting, at the last meeting, did say, did ask the superintendent to work on a, a plan for separation, a financial plan, and to report back by February 15th. And they did ask him to contact the city council to see if we would be open to asking the county committee to wait until after February 15th for this preliminary hearing. Rick and I met with, or spoke with the superintendent, and we did tell him that we had an agenda item on tonight, that we couldn't make that decision. So we are asking the council to agree with us and to postpone that initial meeting until after February 15th. We would just send a letter in writing to the county committee and to Laco, asking for that postponement, to be flexible in the dates, because if we do work out something with the school district, obviously then we're going to want to put this off even longer. But, but we also wanted to make clear to the school board that we would be open to delaying this, but not a open-ended delay. So that's the first part that we're asking for your agreement on.
My comment is just, why are we giving them more time?
Because, and by the way, this is something that Amps agrees with, and because they're asking for it while they're trying in good faith. And it's really not that long since the initial meeting wouldn't be till the end of January, beginning of February. I think it also, again, it's something that shows the county committee that we have bent over backwards to work with the school district. Rick, did you want to add something on this?
No, I want to just, what you said about Amps, you know, that was my reaction too. I was like, hey, we're in the hardball phase, you know, let's not give them any quarter. And I asked Craig about it, and he said, no, it's, it's important. And the other things are that as part of, I think you want to cover the, the other changes that they want to do. Why don't you cover those two, and we can talk about voting on all three of those things?
Okay. So the other two are really changes to the resolution or the petition. And after speaking with the staff at the county committee too, that they're really kind of, because I, I was concerned that it would change the resolution so much that then we would, they would need to start from zero again and have another meeting just to accept, you know, just to say that they got it, to receive it. And so she said, no, really what we're doing is we're adding a couple of advisory parts to it. And the first part is that we wanted to make sure that they understand that we're looking at by, by trustee district voting for this new, for this petition. The, the resident signed petition had by trustee maps on it, so that each trustee district would get one representative on the school board, and there would be five districts. And so we realized that there, there is, it is in here a bit. It does say, and this is under Section 1 Recitals, Letter N, it says, "Organization of a Malibu Unified School District enables all residents of Greater Malibu to have representation on their local school board through the adoption of by trustee area elections." So if we, so we just wanted to add that kind of as an, as advisory, because Laco did say that they would be, if that is part of the ultimate petition, that they would be drawing the maps. We would not be drawing the maps. And then, of course, it would go to the state, and they would have to okay the maps or redraw them or whatever. So that was the first part that we wanted to add, by trustee district. That's the, kind of the easier one. Then the second one that we wanted to add is a, kind of a, a financial plan. And it would be a, let me just read this, and then we can, we can discuss it. And again, this has all been vetted through Amps, and they are supporters of this. And it would kind of be adding the financial separation, and it's really for a transition period. So we believe that the separation of MUSD from SMMUSD should be done in a matter, in a manner that allows for the remaining SMUSD and MUSD districts to become stronger than today by focusing on the unique needs of their constituents and simultaneously ensuring that they have the financial growth to execute on those needs. The approach outlined below relies on the SSC alternative approach proposed to the school board in SSC's review of the Monk report. Gosh, I'm sorry for so many acronyms in here. The intent of our proposed formula is that both new districts have a continually increasing budget each year, as much as it is allowed by external factors, until SMUSD's internal growth no longer requires MSUSD's support. To ensure this, we propose an arrangement that would follow along these principles. In the first year of the split, the total revenue of both districts will be split based on the cost basis to operate each district. The analysis done by Monk in conjunction with the board administration would suggest that this should be around 19% to MUSD and 80, 19.5% to MUSD and 80.5% to SMMUSD of revenues. In subsequent years, MUSD would make payments to SMUSD to ensure a growth of 3.5%. This growth rate was also part of the Monk analysis, from the previous year's budget, as long as there was enough revenue remaining for Malibu to also have a 3.5% growth rate. If there were not enough funds for both districts to have a 3.5% growth rate, then the payment would be such that both districts would have the same growth rate, whatever that might be. These payments would continue for as long as it was necessary, until SMUSD's independent review, independent revenue would itself provide a growth rate of at least 3.5%. So this structure would achieve our goal of a responsible financial transition with ever-increasing revenue for both districts as they both transition into financial and political independence. And again, this would be advisory. So basically, what we want to add is some kind of financial trans, transition into the resolution, because as it's, as it is right now, it's just, you know, we would break apart, and there would be consequences to Santa Monica at that point financially, and we want to build in a transition, that's all. And that the, the county committee would take this in as advisory, that it's just, it's another rationale for why we want to do it. So we were hoping for consensus on the council.
Does anybody object to this?
Well, it isn't a question of objecting to it, because from my perspective, I'm gonna support whatever the two of you have recommended, because we all need to speak with one voice. Personally, I wouldn't give them 10 more minutes, because their February 15th, the same as the original Monk charter was 90 days, and a year and a half went by, and still nothing happened as a result of that. I, I don't think that the, one of the rationales I heard for doing February 15th was that if we didn't do it that way, then they would have to just automatically oppose it. My feeling is ultimately they're gonna automatically oppose it anyway. So as far as the time is concerned, I don't see what we're getting out of that, but if you think it's okay, then I'm, I support you. As far as the other two things are concerned, I, I always thought that when we prepared the petitions in the first place, that doing that by trustee district was not a smart thing for us to do, because it was gonna wind up being in somebody else's hands, not the city of Malibu. And now it'll be in the county's hand and the state's hand what exactly a district is. And I don't know how they're gonna choose that, but I, I can assure you it would be different from how we would choose it. But I know that that was part of the thing, 2,500 people signed it, so we're kind of stuck with that. Yeah, who does it, it is a whole other ballgame. And as far as the continuing support of the Santa Monica school system is concerned, I'm hearing these numbers floating around of 50 years, and I mean, as far as I'm concerned, that is absolutely a non-starter for, for me. I, I think we need to find a transitional point. I could, I agree with that. We've been supporting the school system for many years, and they're expecting us to continue to support it for many years more. And I understand that, and that's, I, I get that. But the fact that they're tossing around numbers, I was at the meeting like you all were, and 50 years, it was like, oh, well, how about 50 years? Oh, yeah, 50 years, that's a great idea. The concept of mortgaging the lives of the citizens of Malibu for the next 50 years to support the Santa Monica School District of a city that is 10 times larger than we are, eight times larger than we are, is insane from my perspective. I do think we should have a transition. The 3.5% thing that Monk agreed on seemed to make sense, but if it goes beyond that into a 50-year thing, I can't support that part of it. But that's my personal feeling, but consider the fact that you will always have my support whatever you guys decide to do.
Well put. You exactly echoed...
Tell it like it is, Lou.
How I felt, you know, and, and I agree with you on those things. And I'm deferring to the experts who are knee-deep in this stuff. And I think, I think that the, the point we want to make, and I think it's important, as we submit our petition to Laco, is, the reality is, it's not about the money. It's about independence. And we have been negotiating in good faith and willing to do a transition plan. We're still willing to do one. We're not gonna do the, I mean, I don't think we're talking about the 50-year plan here. We're talking about something reasonable, it's a more equitable, and it wouldn't, it's not something that would be determined by...
I just, I mean, we did sit in a meeting where to them 50-year plan was a reasonable plan. So I, on, on the record, I was...
Just as a, we're, this is just to...
Not to rip that apart, but...
Okay, yeah, we're not discussing that now. We're not kind of negotiating with ourselves. This is just, you know, two separate parts, to add two parts to the resolution as kind of advisory measures, and then the third part saying, okay, we will send a letter to the county saying, please don't set the first meeting until after February 15th.
Make a motion to do that.
Okay. I'll second it. Did you want to say something?
Yes, I'd just like to add to it. Lou, I think we all feel the same way you do, and thank you for expressing it so briefly and with great velocity and ferocity. I feel the same way you do, but now that I'm entrenched in this a little more and understanding and reading into it a little more, the part about the breaking up and having the voting parts of the district, if you read some of the details that aren't here, but some of the details I reviewed when I was at the last meeting, the reason that they do that is so that they, they can weigh in on Greater Malibu, because they feel that Greater, Greater Malibu needs to be represented as well as the city of Malibu. And that was the only reason that they opined on that was, hey, there's as many students outside the city of Malibu as there are in 90265. It's about half-half. So that's why they wanted to do the district that way. I don't have a problem with that, but I agree with you. I feel the way you do. And, and, but I think we gotta put the good foot forward, as Laura and, and Rick have done, and, and just, you know, with the five of us in solidarity, support what Rick and Laura have pursued at this point.
Is a, a point, the voting, the by trustee district was not put in anything by the, the school board. It was put in by Amps when we were doing the original. It wasn't about not, about people in an incorporated county. It was just to go along with the Voting Rights Act, but...
Right, but that was discussed at the last meeting in some great detail. And there were a lot of discussions after the meeting that a lot of those things were expressed to some of us that didn't have that deep understanding and now...
Right, but I think that it was, the people that were saying that were misinformed. So it was based kind of on things that weren't. But it doesn't really matter for what we're doing on ours, but thank you.
All right. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion to adjourn in memory of Leon Cooper.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.